Alright. Alright, I think everyone that's here that's gonna be here. Ready Regina? Ready Ashley? After the show on the road. Good evening. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council for Monday, July 28th, 2014 will be called to order at 7:03 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able please stand? It's with sadness and abundant respect that I pass on the news about a loss of a friend and a colleague in our community. Mr. Harry G. Reese passed away on Friday, July 25th. I would like to ask you all to join together in a moment of silence in his memory and offer thoughts and prayers for his family he leaves behind. Tonight's invocation will be given in by Alderman Lippman, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that we treat one another as we would like to be treated, that we receive and provide help from and to each other, our constituents, the city staff, and people of goodwill. Let us resolve to do our best to serve the people of Annapolis to the best of our ability. That is our most solemn promise in carrying out the jobs with which we have been entrusted. And to conclude, in honor of our baseball guest from PAL, play ball. Alright.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalitis?
Present.
Alderman Budge?
Here.
Alderman Peon. Alderwoman Pendell-Charles?
Here.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Lippman?
Present.
Alderman Kirby?
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Miss City Attorney, would you please present the first item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is approval of agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include GT 215 Contract Position Law Office and delete GT 2514. Alright, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Miss City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with a city council citation to the Annapolis PAL Astros baseball champions.
Would Alderman Lippman, Coach Gary Galliant, Assistant Coaches Paul Armstrong, Russ Parrish, Matt Osborne, and Aaron Shermer please join me at the center table?
The champions! Yeah! 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 Yeah!
It is my pleasure to introduce the nine U Annapolis PAL Astros. We have citations for each of these players, and hopefully the coaches as well. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this city council citation in recognition of being the nine and under Annapolis PAL Astros team that took home the 2014 Anarundale County Nine U Baseball Championship this spring, completing a perfect season. Completing a perfect season with an 11-0 record. Under the leadership of Coach Gary Gallant and Assistant Coaches Paul Armstrong, Russ Parrish, Matt Osborne, Eric Shermer, the pitching staff was led by Patrick Smith and Johnny Fisoni, who combined for more than 90 strikeouts. Jack Gallant added three saves and Alec Shermer logged 22 strikeouts. The offense was charged by Dylan Leedy, who hit 525, and Vaughn Parrish, who hit 515. Jeremy Urban added 26 hits and Dominic Montini added 16 hits. On the base pass, Lachlan Armstrong swiped 12 bases and Caleb Morgan added 10 more. Solid glove work was delivered by Alex Varancow with 34 putouts and Hamish Osborne added 18 more. We are proud of your athleticism and name you ambassadors to the city of Annapolis that others may strive to follow your example, given under our hands and the great seal of the city of Annapolis this 28th day of July, 2014, signed by Mayor Michael Panalitis, Joe Budge, Fredwick Peon, Rhonda Pendell-Charles, Sheila Finlayson, Jared Lippman, Kenneth Kirby, Ian Pfeiffer, and Ross Arnett III. Congratulations.
You're looking for help. You know, for a photo, if you want to say a few words?
I'm not gonna show you, just go walking up to my back. Or just show me, I wanna see you. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, everything's right. Over, right, no.
Yes, I do. Um... Listen, I wanna say thank you to the mayor and to Alderman Lippman and to the entire council. Thank you very much for this special recognition. It's a well-deserved recognition because these are 12 very special young boys that have really accomplished so much this season, not just as baseball players. They're all continuing to develop as baseball players and the coaches and I, that's obviously we're working day and night to get these guys to develop their skills, but not just on the baseball field. I think everybody that's here should be very proud of these young men because they're developing, again, not as baseball players, but as good friends, as teammates, they're good sportsmen to their opponents, and they're also developing into community citizens. They are, I can't tell you how many times I've noticed them mature as young men, and that's something I think we should all be very proud of. And they've begun to recognize that Annapolis, just by events like this, the community cares about them, and now they're beginning to understand why they should be caring about the community. And I think that's what the coaches' staff tries to do, and it's also what the Peninsula Athletic League, as many of you know, is a 501(c)(3) organization here in Annapolis. You know, our mission is to provide baseball and football opportunities to every child in Annapolis, no matter what background, what education, whatever neighborhood they grow up in. We want to provide them with a sport that they can grow up and develop and love and maintain a healthy and active lifestyle. These young boys are special, but also all the boys and girls in Annapolis and the ones that play at PAL, we try to give them every opportunity they can to continue to mature like these 12 boys have done amazingly all season long. So, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. One thing, if I can, I wanna ask Hamish Osborne and Vaughn Parrish to come up and provide the mayor with a special gift. They're providing him with a team-signed baseball.
You got some kids here in the TVs, they'll all have to come by and say their names, and rub and say.
I'm Dylan Leedy.
I'm Alec Shermer.
I'm Dominic Montini.
I'm Jackallan.
I'm Lachlan Armstrong.
I'm Patrick Smith.
I am Hamish Osborne.
I'm Vaughn Parrish.
I'm Caleb Morgan.
I'm Jeremy Urban.
Congratulations, that's my honor. We'll bring them up, everybody. Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Miss City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the quarterly report from the Housing Authority of the city of Annapolis.
Would the representatives of the Housing Authority please join us at the center table? Good evening.
Good evening.
Come back here.
What happened?
Dance game.
Oh! I didn't see it.
Fine, sir, how are you?
We're ready, whenever you're ready proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to come and make the quarterly report on the progress of the Annapolis Housing Authority and also have an opportunity to respond to comments that have been made in the public press. I wanted to take this opportunity first to thank each member of the council who I've worked with over the years. I've worked with each member of the city council in some form or fashion. I worked with, obviously, Alderman Joe Budge, who is the Alderman representing Ward 1, has done a superb job. One of the things that he has done by working with the residents of Bloomsbury Square, he's one of their esteemed. They recognize that they have an Alderman that cares about all of its residents in Ward 1, and I'm greatly appreciative of him for that. I see Fred is not here, but if Alderman Peon was here, I would also lift up the fact that he is working now with Speaker Bush, HACCA staff, and the community in seeking to find funding to address the serious recreational problems that exist in that ward. And we applaud him for his willingness to work with the community. Alderman Rhonda Pendell-Charles, I've known for considerable time, she follows in the footsteps of Alderwoman Classy Hall. In her ward, she has Annapolis Gardens and a subsidized project called Boston Heights, or now Admiral Oaks. That is a community that has been turned around as a result of the work we've been able to do in public housing. Alderman Sheila Finlayson has been a leading voice in the redevelopment of Newtown 20. She has been working with staff, her residents, her community, to ensure that our most neediest residents are indeed, their needs are met, and I appreciate the leadership that she has given to us. In Ward, in Ward 5, my Alderman, Jared Lippman, who serves in that ward, is in the seat that I once occupied. For 12 years, I served on Annapolis City Council. For 12 years, I had the great pleasure and privilege of representing the Ward 5 residents. And I want to tell Alderman Lippman how appreciative I am of the leadership that he has been providing to the residents of Ward 5. I love the fact that he has a newsletter, he keeps us constantly informed, we know what his positions on most issues are, and again, I thank him. Alderman Kenny Carabee is an Alderman that represents Ward 6. Ward 6 has the largest concentration of public and subsidized housing in it. Ward 6 is a ward that desperately needs the kind of voice that Alderman Kirby brings. In that burr-tone voice of his, you will hear both the pain, the passion, and aspirations of his constituents. He's done a marvelous job. Gentlemen, Alderman Ian Pfeiffer and I share this in common. He is the chairman of Finance Committee, a post that I once held on the city council. I recognize his need to be able to budget the social needs of a city and look at the realities of the fiscal bottom line, and he is an Alderman that I've worked with, I've come to admire, we've talked on budgetary issues, and I look forward to a continuing working relationship with him. Alderman Ross Arnett has done something that I think is really important for the entire city. It's one thing that I would hope becomes a model. He has taken diverse communities and brought them together. He worked closely with Alderman Kenny Carabee, bought into East Sports Civic Association to work with the residents of Harbor House and East Porters. He supported something called Unity Day, where you bring people together. He has worked diligently with Seeds for Success, which is a program we're very proud of in HACCA. Seeds for Success won the Fannie Lou Gehring prestigious award because it was such an effective program, and I thank Alderman Ross Arnett for his leadership. Mr. Mayor, I've had the pleasure of working with mayors, starting with Mayor Roger, Pip Moyer, all the way to the present. The only mayor I've never worked with was you. Never had an opportunity to meet you. The first time you and I ever met was by happenstance, on Northwest Street, at the post office. You had made a very unfathomable comment concerning me, I'd never met you before, so we had an opportunity, for more than an hour, you and I had a dialogue on that corner. It was a candid conversation. You made it very clear which of your colleagues you liked and you didn't like, you told me why you didn't like them. We had this long, intense conversation. Before I met you, the only thing I knew about you was that you was a delegate for the Republican National Convention supporting Newt Gingrich in 2012, which certainly was your right. I happened to have supported President Barack Obama. But here we were, on the corner, two native Anapolitans, having a discussion. And one of the things I will take away from that conversation was two things. One, you had indicated to me that never again would I have to worry about you making comments about me publicly, because your agreement was, you would just say to the press, "If there's any concerns, call and have to talk about it, we leave it at that." I made a similar commitment to you, I wouldn't make any public comments about you. You didn't keep your promise, and we now find ourselves at a very interesting point. And I've come to raise some issues with you tonight, because I think arrogance superseded by ignorance of governance is not good. I don't think it's good for the city, I don't think it's good for the direction that we're hitting. It seems to me, someone who's been in government, I understand how it operates, I know how it functions, for an elected official to say that he is keeping a campaign promise based on a tweet is indicative of how he doesn't understand how government ought to work. People ought to look at what public policies mean, people ought to be looking at how we impact our city. Mr. Mayor, I've seen you govern, and I've watched you closely, I've seen you remove some competent people from office, both black and white, male and female. I've watched you operate in what I can only determine to be in a very unfair manner. It is so similar to how Newt Gingrich ran the Congress. It was short-sighted and short-term. Newt Gingrich won temporary, temporary victories, but in the long run, he lost. He's a former speaker, he never will be president of the United States, because he forgot one fundamental thing. There is a difference between running for public office, public office, which is politics, and when you get elected, you ought to govern. That's when politics ought to be put to the side, and we start to look at what's best for our city, what's best for our community, what's best for the citizenry. I mentioned to you earlier, I've worked with all kinds of mayors, Democrats and Republicans. I met, I worked with Mayor John Apostle, who was a Republican, first Greek mayor elected, to my knowledge, to the city of Annapolis. He was very helpful in helping me deal with the issue of FBI spying on people unfairly. I've worked with other mayors in this city who happen to be Republicans. Dean Johnson was an Alderman that I served with and who became mayor and helped me put together landmark legislation that's still on the books today that prohibit private clubs from discriminating against people based on their race, their color, their creed, etc. When you offered up the name of Sandra Chapman, she's someone I know, someone I hold personally in high regard, we've worked together on many issues over the years. Sandra, when she worked, lived in Bloomsbury Square, worked with her then, when she moved back to Annapolis, I worked with her. And if the idea was somehow divide and conquer, I'm here to tell you, that won't work. I didn't come here for the purpose of doing anything but making two points to you, and I want to make it as loud and as clear as I can. I don't look to seek any job from you, the job as chairman of the Housing Authority is a non-paying job. I get no compensation for it, I've done it for five years. I've done it because I love this city. I'm not trying to ingratiate myself with you, I'm not trying to be validated by you, I don't work for you, I don't seek to work for you. I do work for the people in this city, where I've spent almost 40 years of my life in some public capacity. I have seen the comments that you've made, comments that you've never taken the time to come forward, said, "Let's have a private conversation." I know your father, I knew him for 30 years, I would hope your father would have given you some good counsel, maybe he did, maybe he just didn't listen. It is said that some people you listen to is Bobby AG and Ted Samaris, both I know, I would hope they've given you good counsel, but to date, if they have, you've not listened. So, tonight I come here to make the following statement to you so that you will understand. Mr. Mayor, you cannot select our leaders, you cannot tell us who we should be supporting and who speaks for us. When you attempt to do that, you, you display an insensitivity to the African-American community. When you characterize Alderwoman Finlayson as an angry black woman, you're mistaken. She's an intelligent black woman, who speaks clearly to the issues that concern her and her constituents. There are people who you have released, and you know they include people who worked with you previously. Eugene Peterson, Kirby McKenny, Richard Knoll, Tony Spencer, all good people. The difference between them and I is they just quietly walk away. You don't know me, sir, 'cause if you did, you would realize all the people you've got to select into the city to deal with, if you thought it would be a one-moment thing, you're in for a great surprise. Now, here's what I want to share with you and other colleagues, other members of the council. Jeff, would you speak to each council member, give us that, please? The Board of Commissioners met this evening, and one of the things I want to take this moment to thank the Board of Commissioners, their support has been unwavering, very supportive. They've made it crystal clear that they appreciate the leadership that I've brought, the accomplishments that have been made, and notwithstanding your efforts to try to diminish my influence, the belief that somehow that you thought that by not reappointing me to the Board of Commissioners, you would have the final say. Sir, I want to read, for the record, the resolution that you're reading, which you will come as a surprise. It is legally sufficient, it will withstand any scrutiny or any challenge, and for the audience, I'm reading it in its entirety, because I think people need to know. It's Resolution Number 072814. Whereas Carl Snowden has served as a commissioner of the Housing Authority of the city of Annapolis, the authority since 2009, and whereas during a period of outstanding service, he's demonstrated exemplary leadership on behalf of the authority, which is during his tenure, has accomplished the following, which is a partial list of our accomplishments. Authorities were removed from the troubled list of public housing authorities by HUD. Structures within certain communities of authority have been rededicated for prominent Annapolis citizens, including Morris H. Blum, Joseph Zashul Sims, and Elsie Clark. Maintenance and the condition of authorities' properties have been vastly improved. Efforts have been advanced for the continued redevelopment of authorities' Newtown 20 community. A request for proposal has been issued for qualified firms to participate in the redevelopment of authorities' Morris H. Blum community. 20 staff members were hired from July 1st, 2013 through July 30, 2014, including 13 of Annapolis residents, which includes three residents of the authorities' communities. Adult computer classes have been initiated by the authorities' residents. A partnership with the Anarundale Medical Center has been established to assist in providing basic and essential health services to its residents. The Anarundale Workforce Development Corporation has partnered with the authority in sponsoring a job fair. a job fair to assist in providing employment opportunities to its residents. Enrollment sessions to assist Authority residents in signing up for the health insurance has been conducted. There's an annual participation in the Homeless Resource Day to assist with pre-applications for prospective residents of the Authority's communities. And there's an annual participation with the Anorunda County Community Action Agency to assist Authority's residents regarding energy conservation needs. Whereas Mr. Snowden's tenure as a Commissioner of the Authority expires this Thursday, July 31st, 2014, and he will no longer be a Commissioner as described in Section 13104 of the Housing and Community Development Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And whereas in special recognition of distinguished service to the Authority, the Board of Commissioners, in special recognition of distinguished service to the Authority, the Board of Commissioners of the Authority desired to establish the position of Chairman Emeritus. Now therefore be it resolved that Carl Snowden is hereby appointed Chairman Emeritus of the Authority for his outstanding service as a distinguished chairman, and in this appointed capacity, his Chairman Emeritus may continue to serve the Authority with his counsel and advice. And be it further resolved that the Chairman Emeritus shall provide such advisory services to the Board as requested from time to time by the Board. And be it further resolved that Chairman Emeritus shall be privileged to attend all annual special and regular meetings of the Authority and may participate in discussions at such meetings, but shall not be entitled to vote and shall not be counted for purposes of establishing a quorum. And be it further resolved that appointment of Chairman Emeritus shall continue at the pleasure of the Board and shall be effective on August 1st, 2014. All members of the current Board of Commissioners have signed that. It's my intention to continue to work with the Board of Commissioners, to move forward the progress that we have made. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to publicly invite you once again to join a team to understand that if you want to move this city forward, the way to move it forward is in partnership. If Newt Gingrich is your example of what makes a good leader, I think you're sadly mistaken if you think that kind of politics worked in our city. Mr. Mayor, I invite you to be a part of, to meet with the Board, which you have not done, to meet with the Board, to see what our goals are and where we're going. And at this point, I'll pause to see if there are any questions, and if not, I will have staff complete the final part of our report. But I think it's important that I make it crystal clear to you, I've got children over me, who I am, where I come from, my passion. I'm not the kind of person that backs away from a political battle, and I just want you to know, and if you don't believe me, ask your father, I'm quite capable of dealing with the issues that I'm confronted with. So, Mr. Mayor, would you want to take questions at this point, or you want me to have staff proceed with their final report?
I'll have the staff proceed with the report, but before they do, I want to address some of your comments. First, I thought this was a quarterly update of the Housing Authority, not a basic twenty-minute trash session on myself. The first point you made up, that we met on West Street around Church Kirkland-
Northwest Street.
-is not true.
Northwest Street.
Northwest Street. We met at the Martin Luther King Dinner and Breakfast, and we had actually met several times before that with my father, which you may not remember. And he does know you, know you well. In regard to the comments of Alderman Finlayson, I have never referred to her as an angry black woman. That was a headline that was written in the Capitol, it was not something that I said. Third, into this infatuation with Newt Gingrich, every year when they have conventions for presidential candidates, they ask people to be delegates. They're the ones who actually select people to be president, not all the people that vote. I had a number of people ask me to serve on their committees, I turned it down, and Newt Gingrich was one I happened to say yes to. He by no means represents everything that I represent. I'm getting a hundred text messages as we speak, so I'll put this over here. But I'll just say this, because I won't get into the back and forth with you, and I told this to Jack, the reporter from the Capitol, when he asked about you and your service. And I did, I echoed the same comment we had, I said, "I'm not going to say anything bad about Carl." I said, "When the book is written on the city of Annapolis, there will be an entire chapter dedicated to Carl Snowden and his legacy." I said, "The good, the bad, and everything in between."
Right. Mr. Mayor, for clarification, what I said to you was, the first one-on-one conversation that we ever had, one-on-one, not talking about meeting you at the Martin Luther King Junior Dinner, that came afterwards, but the first one-on-one conversation we ever had was on Northwest Street, longest conversation I've ever had with you. And all I can simply say to you again is, the reason I'm using this form, to be very clear about it, there are literally hundreds of people who are watching the night's program. When Jack Lampert, the reporter, asked me for my reaction to Sandra Chapman, I said to him, "You'll hear my reaction at the meeting." He then asked the same question another way, and I had to remind him the English language is clear. My response is, "You'll hear it at that meeting." And the reason I wanted to do that is, I wanted to be unfiltered, didn't want somebody to take an excerpt of what I said, I wanted people to hear precisely what I had to say. And I'm the kind of person that speaks directly. You may not agree with my point of view, but you will never walk away not knowing where I stand on this issue. So I welcome Sandra Chapman, if it's the will of the Commissioner, of the, excuse me, of the council, to confirm her appointment, look forward to working with her, look forward to working with others. But the most salient point I want you to hear, if you hear nothing else tonight, the day has long gone when people believe they can select who speaks for a community. Communities elect people, select people to speak for them. And you sent me a very nice letter when you announced that I was not being appointed, and had your July 7th letter reflecting your public posture, we didn't even have this conversation. But unfortunately, when I was in Florida, there was an article that was published, never got an opportunity to respond to it, and it's my first chance to publicly thank people in this community who've been with me for many years, who've supported me in many causes. And, Mr. Mayor, I suggest to you, and I leave you with this before turning it over to staff, it's your choice. If you choose to work, you'll find an able partner, one you won't always agree with, but I'll be there. As long as your best interest is moving the city forward, you'll have a worthy partner. When I see you doing things that I think are not in the best interest of this community, I will speak very clearly. And the reference, by the way, just so you know, that I'm making about selecting our leaders, when we invited you to come to the African-American Leadership Forum, you made the point that you think you can select which leaders you will speak to in our community. That was my point.
That is-
Mr. Leggett?
-an inaccurate statement, but go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Leggett, you want to pick up from there? Unless there's questions.
Mr. Leggett, can you use the microphone, please? Use a microphone, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite the balance of my senior staff, Chief Joseph Johnson, Chief of Staff, who will give an update on safety, and Richard Walton, the Director of Finance. I just got a couple of points. One, I'm going to give you a brief update on our redevelopment initiatives. College Creek Terrace Phase Three, it's sixty-one units is completing the final phase of that project. It's been funded, it's a thirteen million dollar initiative. It will be thirty public housing units, twenty-one tax credit units, and ten project base, and we hope to go to settlement at the end of the year, November, and a year later, that development will be up and running. Newtown 20, we, within the next thirty to sixty days, will be finalizing our business term with the development partner, Hamstead Company, that the Board of Commissioners selected to look at not only redevelopment of Newtown 20, but looking at the entire Newtown corridor, looking at Woodside Gardens, as well as Newtown 20. And we recently issued a request for proposals on Morris Blum, and we have ten qualified firms that would be submitting their proposals to us in September, and we'll be working with a review panel that's comprised of residents of Morris Blum, the surrounding community, and other strategic partners helping to evaluate those proposals. And the goal is to make a recommendation and selection in November. So that's the redevelopment initiative. Richard Walton, you want to give me a thumbnail? And Chief is also here on any public safety, and that would conclude our presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Richard Walton, and I've been with the Housing Authority for the last eight years. I'm here to present an overview of our budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. We were able to prepare a balanced budget, it was presented to the Board and approved a month ago. I quickly want to highlight our sources of income, and the main source of income is operating subsidy which we receive from HUD. And the next major area is the revenue that we receive from our tenants when they pay rent to us. And I'll elaborate on that a little further as I get into my presentation. In terms of expenses, we have administrative and general expenses, we have project-based budgeting expenses, resident service costs, and utility costs, and maintenance, of course. Budgetary notations, I'll comment on that fairly quickly. We are expecting to maintain an occupancy rate of ninety-five percent, but our real goal is to hit ninety-eight percent. As we all know, that occupancy rate brings in revenue to us. One of the main problems we are confronted with now is we are not receiving what we had budgeted for in terms of revenue from our residents, because a lot of them, for some reason, are not earning the kind of money they earned a year ago. I'm a public notary, and I have been notarizing documents for residents, and I would think ninety percent of them state zero income. Zero income means that the residents don't have enough money to pay the agency, and therefore, it will impact our income. Budget, requested subsidy, HUD is going to fund us at eighty-nine percent of the requested subsidy. And just break that down real quick for the benefit of who don't understand. Let's say it costs the agency a dollar to run our operation. HUD is saying to us, "I'm only going to give you eighty-nine percent. You therefore have to come up with that eleven cents to manage your, to balance your budget." So that's another problem we are confronted with on a monthly basis. We did factor in a utility increase in our expenses of five percent. We also factored in a three percent cost delivered increase for our staff. We haven't had that since 2009. And I also factored in the cost of developing Newtown 20. That is being worked on, as you all know, we are looking seriously at developing Newtown 20. And we were fortunate in that we were able to negotiate with Anorunda Workforce Development Summer Youth Workshop Program to fill twenty seasonal summer camp age hires at no cost to the agency. So that concludes my overview of the Housing Authority's budget for 2015. I really want to go about very quick to the resident income. Sorry?
Why don't you just put a pen in there, because I want to get to Mr. Johnson, he will surf back to you.
Oh, all right, okay. Just to clear up the issue of occupancy, because that drives income for us, and certainly we're short of income. Excluding the twenty-plus units that are prominently offline in Newtown because of lack of dollars to fix those units, we're batting at about ninety-seven percent occupancy rate. So you can see, as Mr. Leggett spoke to the issue of redeveloping Newtown, it is critically important to us that we get those units back online to help our income stream. In terms of safety, Chief Priestup and I meet on a regular basis. If we're not personally meeting, we're talking back and forth. We're basically, the last major chat we had dealt with squeening tenants seeking affordable housing and lease violations, and how do we address lease violations. In terms of maintenance, because that's half of our workforce at the Housing Authority, we've cut the maintenance force by nine personnel, partly in response to the short change in the budget strategy, and secondarily because we've gone from eleven-hundred-four units down to seven-hundred-ninety units. If there's any questions about safety or occupancy, I'll be happy to get down in the weeds with you if you care to. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to that.
Alderman, Arnett has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Snowden, thank you for your service and apparently continued service. So as always, I find these sessions frustrating because of the lack of time that we have, and I really do encourage that we schedule a work session where we can have a more full dialogue back and forth. I just think that's essential if we're going to, you know, really get down to breast taxes on things. I think we made a great stride under the last administration by having these quarterly briefings. I think that the last administration set the proper tone that public housing is part of the city, needs to be recognized as such, and I think we have, but I think we need to do more, and I think we really do need to have those meetings where we sit down and work with each other. Chief Johnson, you and I have spoken about safety from time to time, and I noticed on the agenda that there's the item lease enforcement, and I guess I'd kind of like to get a sense of how that's working out. But also, I have to tell you, I continually get questions from various constituents about where's the Housing Authority's safety plan. I must admit, I don't know that there is one or what the status is, but that is something that I hear quite often. So I guess the effectiveness of the lease enforcement and then status of the safety plan would be answers that would help me carry back a message to my constituents.
Lease enforcement is our segue into making our properties safe. And one of the problems, we don't have any problem identifying guests that we would like to see replaced, but there is a process. And I think the chief and myself and some of his staff members went over that process a week or two ago. Now, one bright spot in that whole business is that the Housing Authority's Board of Commissioners has given us the authority to move away from a volunteer grievance process to put our RFP on the street to seek attorneys to handle our grievance process. So thereby, it is my hope that we would cut the turnaround time from we seek an eviction by at least sixty or seventy percent. But Alderman, Arnett, speaking to the safety plan you referred to, I've got to tell you, sir, I've been here in the city of Annapolis since 1991, and I've had a few attempts, myself and various mayors, to write a safety plan. I got to tell you, I hear all this chatter, but I'm told by HUD officials that the only safety plan that we have that's recognizable is our lease, and every tool that we need are contained within our lease.
Okay. The lease is the safety plan?
Yes, sir.
All right? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Littman?
Hello, Chief Johnson, thank you for coming tonight. I guess you got my interest with that last comment. Are you saying the lease is a satisfactory safety plan? Are you satisfied with-
Very much so. I've got a lot of flexibility within that lease. One of the hangups that we have, the lease does entitle a person that's being evicted a grievance hearing. And currently, our board grievance panel consists of good, decent, hard-working volunteers. Emotions come into this, and I think last week, the reporter sat in on one. And I believe he walked away, and you can ask him if he walked away with a little bit different feeling. See, I like to look at the legalistics of it, because that's what I do. But there are emotions that were entered that room during that process that causes one to pause and listen, and listen deeply. That works sometimes, and sometimes it doesn't. Their essence is, let's take drug distribution, sex offenders, and those kind of things. let's take drug distribution, sex offenders and those kinds of things. Well, I will go into the room myself and ask the chief to send an officer with personal knowledge of those cases. Because I want to do everything that I can to take back our unit and hopefully make our properties a little bit safer.
I have two requests. One, if you could, I guess, further elaborate how the lease is a safety plan. I guess you gave a couple of examples. And the second, can you give some examples, because I get questions as well, about the safety on your property? Can you give some examples of how you're working with Chief Presto to ensure that there is adequate safety?
Yes. Every morning, the chief puts out a news release for the city. And I guess any reader that signed up is privy to that news piece. Every morning, that goes to all of my property managers. And before 9 o'clock, I have a response back telling me whether or not the arrestee, suspect, or victim has a relationship to our properties via lease or on a lease. So we look at everything that come out crime-related. And if there is an access between the two, then that property manager has to send back 10-day notice, have given a 10-day notice or a 30-day notice based on violation. Then we do wait oftentimes till we get a follow-up report or verification from the police department.
That's, I guess, and that is your answer to the lease question? That's how, okay. What about the answer to the second part of the question, which is, can you give some examples? I know you work with Chief Presto closely. But can you elaborate for the public who isn't aware of how that relationship works to help ensure the safety on your properties?
Well, I cited one, what a, a part of what I thought the answer was, and that is, if it's a case where we've had enough already, then I'll ask Mike to send me over an officer with firsthand knowledge. I, an example would be, we had information of a sex offender residing, not necessarily on a lease, in our properties. So we teamed up and we got members from the police department and members from our maintenance staff, and we conducted a midnight raid, so to speak. Those kinds of actions. Moreover, when the chief were putting together a grant position for additional officers, I think it was called a community-based policing, we supported that grant. And we currently have space on our largest property, the Harbor House property, where he does have a team of police officers.
Thank you. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, Chief, I'd like to kind of piggyback on the last question. I think at the last council meeting, we were challenged with the belief that there is no policing in public housing. And that
There is no what?
There is no policing in public housing. And that there needs to be a separate entity, a separate organization hired, I guess. Can you tell us a little bit about from whence we've come? Because I recall when I came on the council some eight years ago, public housing was hiring police, city police, part-time to work. And then you, and I'm not going to tell you what to say, but I believe you entered a relationship with the city and their current police chief to address.
Let me give you the history from 1991, when I came up until 2007, 2008, when I left. When Chief Robbins and I were hired in 1991, we occupied space in the Housing Authority's Harbor House community. We put a sergeant and non-police officer there. We called it community-based policing. It went on for six, seven, eight years. Subsequent to that, Mayor Moya, I think Josh was on the finance committee. We began sending $50,000 annually for the Housing Authority to hire officers, city officers, in a secondary mode. We increased that 50 to 100, if memory serves me correctly. And I think in 2006, 2007, thereabouts, look at the finance record, I think we were sending as much as $200,000 over to the director of the Housing Authority to hire officers in a secondary capacity. And I think the proof of that was when that band list rolled up to 600 persons plus. When I came back to the Housing Authority in 2010, to my surprise, the Housing Authority, through its limited budget, was sending $8,800 a month to the police department. So what a reversal, what a role reversal there. And let me tell you something. This issue of not seeing police on public housing, that's just not true. I see the chief's people on, and every one of our properties, that they worked hand-in-hand with us. There's nothing we go over and ask for that they are withholding from us that they shouldn't give us. So we have full cooperation from the chief of police and his people.
Thank you. My second question is for Mr. Snowden. How did the city council get involved in this confirmation process? Can you give us a little history on that, please?
Thank you. What we need to do is pay closer attention to what was going on in public housing. And one of the reforms that came out of public housing was that our board of commissioner members and executive director was required to file annual financial statements to ensure that there would not be conflicts. This is beyond what is required with HUD. The problem is, it's always been lapsed. Quite honestly, nobody pays attention. And you've had boards that came following this, where quite candidly, there were sweetheart deals. Very, very clear in my mind that certain things occurred because it was not the council oversight. Prior to that, prior to Mayor Moya and this council, the previous council, making a decision, a commissioner was appointed only by the mayor. So he or her could select anybody to be on the board of commission without council approval. One of the reforms that came out was to have the council members review the mayor's appointment. And one of the things that I have thought had worked well when this reform took place, instead of the mayor putting up a person and having the board, having the council voted up or down, it's been the practice to have that person referred to one of the standing committees. That standing committee then have the responsibility and obligation to vet the candidate, to make sure that there are no conflicts, to make sure certain questions are asked. And then that committee makes its full recommendation to the council. While it is the mayor's recommendation, the current law requires council approval. So in effect, when a person is recommended by the mayor, that person, just like a department head, must be approved by the council. And the rationale for that is, it's time to start paying closer attention to who we appoint to a commission. The budget ventures, what is the budget for Housing Authority, the annual budget? It's a $19 million, it's a $19 million budget, of which the board is supposed to be governing. And so who you guys appoint to kind of review that is very, very important. We are very, very fortunate, in my opinion, that, given the last five years, we put in place some oversight to ensure that the kind of problems that have occurred in the past have not occurred. And why it's been said before, I don't think most people get this, so I'll repeat it. This is the first time in more than a decade that we've been moved off the trouble list. That means we're doing something right. The oversight's there, we got the fiscal controls in place, we're not running any deficits, and the board has been paying close attention. And last point I'd like to make, relevant to your question, is unlike the previous board, where a deal was struck, where residents who lived in Annapolis Gardens in particular, I think, got the short end of the deal. Because I don't think people were paying attention to what was going on. And you wound up with residents, I think, not benefiting from what should have been in the public interest. So that's been the historical process of council involvement. It is relatively new, and I'm hoping that the council will pay attention to who it points to the board.
Thank you.
Alderman Littman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An issue I've been thinking about for the council on its budget, I wonder if you've explored, is the hacker budget audited?
Yes.
It is?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
An outside auditor?
It's outside auditor. We have, we are very proud, very, very proud of the fact that we're audited. We have, the problems of the past is that, problems of the past. This board has been very diligent. And I, if I can, Alderman, because I didn't do this and I should have, the gentleman to my left, Dick Callahan, he's a former director of Recreation and Parks. But he's also the treasurer. And I give Dick credit for paying attention. He works very, very closely. Here's a man who's got 30 years of experience in government. He knows how it works. He knows how budget works. He's worked closely with our staff. And it's a team that makes this possible. And Dick's longevity on this board, his knowledge of government, has been very, very helpful to us.
I'm very happy to hear that. And for sharing with my colleagues, it's something I've heard other colleagues mention, and something I think we should consider, is whether we should be bringing in an outside auditor that reports to the council to review city council, the city's budget. And Mr. Callahan, I hear there might be another opening in Parks and Rec.
Alderman Littman, I'd like to just add a couple of things. And I think I got a sense of what you're asking for clearer examples of cooperation between the chief and myself. And if you care to, there are other essences and items and things and strategies that we share. I don't want to sit here and talk about them here. But I'd be happy to submit a brief report to you and the other holder person that are interested, sir.
I wasn't asking for anything confidential. I'm just looking for, to get a flavor of the cooperation and the work that you do. Obviously, even in very low crime periods, there is some very serious crime. And so when those events happen, the immediate reaction is, how did this happen? What's going on? Wasn't there police presence? Weren't you involved? And so I was trying to just give you a platform where you can address those concerns from people and those reactions.
Mike and I both draw a pencil from the same city, and I think we share a lot of things, other than the pencil, where we get our pencil from.
Mr. Alderwoman Pendell-Charles?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank the hacker board. I mean, I've learned more the past couple of months about hacker than I have. I read it, I've read about it in the paper over decades. But obviously, things have come a long, long way. Extraordinary work that you all have done, Mr. Snowden and Mr. Leggett. I'm going to bring up also two other people, Mr. Callahan, who did a stellar job as Wrecking Parks Director. And I remember that on a personal basis. And Chief Johnson, who was head of patrol in Baltimore City when I was a assistant state's attorney there, and also came back home to the chief of police here. And so he knows the ins and outs as far as public safety. But all these folks sitting at this table bring their own skill set and diversity to a board that I think has worked extraordinarily well. And my hats off to you all, coming here and bringing to the table and telling us, and telling the public what's been going on. I think it's remarkable. And I think kudos go to every last one of you all. And the gentleman, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd just like to conclude my remarks, if it's okay with, I failed to introduce, and I should have, commissioners. And I want to just quickly introduce Commissioner Jackie Wells. Sorry. Is that a pressing point to the here for me? Just for the time, for the purpose of time, if you want to go ahead, can we just go forward? Because I know you've got a long agenda, Mr. Man. If you don't, I, Richard, we can follow up and give the supplemental.
No, I just want to make a quick point here pertaining to the audited financial statements. Since I'm head of finance, you can view our audited financial statements on the website.
Yes.
You could also view my budget for 2015 on the website. I just wanted to put that over there.
Thank you, sir. Let me just conclude by introducing our commissioners. Commissioner Jackie Wells, who have come on the board, she's our newest member, has done an outstanding job, great public servant, worked in Bloomsbury Square, just a wonderful person. And you will get to see her leadership blossom. Already, for those who don't know it, Bloomsbury Square is one of the greatest public housing developments in the state of Maryland, bar none. It's remarkable what public housing can do with the right leadership involved. We have with us Commissioner Eliza Mae Robinson. And for the newer members of the commission, we have no idea, looking at this lady in front of you, who is a senior citizen, but who was involved in leading the longest rent strike in the history of the state of Maryland. Took place in a development she used to live in called Kimar Apartments, it's now called Woodside Gardens. Her leadership speaks for itself. And then, of course, we have Commissioner Deborah Johnson, who has a master's degree, who lived in public housing, who's been an outstanding leader, who worked with the Rad Board, and we're just delighted to have her on board. I mentioned to you previously, Dick Callahan, his record speaks for itself. The one commissioner that's meeting is Commissioner Cynthia Carter, who's claimed the fame beyond being a native Annapolis and living in the first public housing development that was built in the city. She is the first African-American woman to get elected to the Annapolis City Council, a history maker in her own right. And then Commissioner Jeff Henderson, a native Annapolis cosmopolitan traveler. If any of you ever want to know anything about Egypt, Mr. Mayor, he will take you to school on more than one occasion. And lastly, on your agenda, and I saw that both you and Alderman Budge, Alderman Finlayson has sponsored this, it's my hope that entire council will lay their name to it, it's the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. If there's ever a example of city having an opportunity to have every member of the council loan their name to that, this is it, when this particular, particular resolution comes up. The bottom line is, it waves costs for the city. But it also raises consciousness for the residents who live in the city. The one message that I think, if you hear nothing else, we are one Annapolis, we're one people, we have one direct, we have one testament. The Martin Luther King Jr. Parade reflects that. If the city adopts it, it will be the first time in the city's history, 1708, when it was chartered, the first time in its history that it will have sponsored an annual Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. It's long overdue, and I would just urge persons to be a part of that. And Mr. Mayor, we did make a recommendation when we first came here with the quarterly report many, many, many months ago, that you consider having a work session where we can have more time, as Alderman Ross talked about, delve into the issue. As mayor, you get to set the agenda. And hopefully, in the future, you'll see the wisdom of us having a work session so that we can have a further dialogue. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And I look forward to scheduling a work session after the August break.
Thank you.
Ready? All right. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is reports by committees.
Is there any other person that would like to present a report? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee met just this last week and reported favorably on the State Circle parking bill. But more importantly, I wish to communicate to everyone that there is a public hearing on changes to transit services in Annapolis that will be, the hearing will be held here in these council chambers on Wednesday of this week at 7:00 PM. And the details of the proposed changes are available from the city's public information officer, as well as on the Transportation Department's website, or webpage on the city's website, excuse me. And I encourage everyone who has thoughts, concerns, or care about the transit system in Annapolis to get your comments in so that we can consider them in comments in so that we can consider them in developing final proposed changes that will then come to the city council.
Thank you. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, the Public Safety Committee met on last Monday, the twenty-first and we had an exciting rollout, uh, of an app, uh, from the Office of Emergency Management, uh, so you can go to the App Store and type in City of Annapolis and the app will come up and it kind of looks like this, too bad the TV isn't on so you can see it, but it gives you current weather, it gives you a site where you can see all the things you need to be prepared for any emergency, any eventuality, it gives you up-to-date traffic, local information, school closings, when school starts again, uh, you can sign up for code red for those people who are not already in that system, uh, gives you power outages, people to contact and so forth, so we were very excited, there's still a few glitches because it's connected to some websites at the state and they're still working out their glitches, but you can go into your App Store, if you have an iPhone or a, what is the other phone is that you can use?
Droid.
Droid, that's what it is, a droid and get this app and be connected for any emergency that may come our way, including traffic, so we're very excited about that, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the Environmental Matters Committee, uh, met this month on the seventeenth, uh, one of the things I want to make sure, uh, the public's aware of and I'll ask, I'm asking for your assistance, uh, regarding the Crystal Spring filing that was filed in June, uh, the Department of Neighborhood Environmental Programs is due to file their response by early August, they have, um, asked for public comment and that deadline is coming up, it's this Wednesday, the thirtieth and the part of this that I'd ask for your assistance is the, uh, I think the public's very concerned about so far the insufficient transparency of this filing, um, we were, uh, we did not get the requested report from the department on what the filing was about and so people are just left to interpret what's on the website on their own, which included exhibits that were mislabeled, it's very confusing, um, and, and for the average citizen, it's hard to decipher and so I just ask for your assistance in making sure that the city is as transparent as it can be, that it would post the comments, the public comments that are, uh, being submitted and, uh, department responses, uh, were applicable, I, you know, this is obviously a major project, however you feel about it and I'm not expressing an opinion about it, all I'm advocating for is the transparency of it and certainly, um, I think we need your assistance on that.
You have my full support and the city manager and I will talk with Maria tomorrow about ways we can improve the process, make sure, we've got a lot of responses as well. Alderman Kirby?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, the Housing and Welfare Committee met also on Monday and, uh, we did take up two resolutions that we will have further in, uh, for approval of community legacy grants for, uh, the Newtown twenty development and, uh, the Bowman Building.
Thank you. Thank you, is there anyone else? All right, Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
All right, during comments by the general public, you may speak on anything that is not already scheduled for a public hearing tonight, we have a number of things on the hearing, but before we start that, I'd like to, uh, bring up our police chief, Mike Priest to come forward and address some concerns that have been going on in our community, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I have been asked to, to address, uh, the council and I think the community deserves to, to hear from me about one particular issue recently, uh, we've been receiving some emails, I know the mayor has had some complaints regarding Clay Street and some of the interaction that we, the police department have had with the community and I, I want to give a little bit of background so we can have some perspective and then I, I assume there could be any, any amount of questions, I did bring with me senior staff today, Captain Cynthia Howard, our patrol commander's with me, Mr. Miguel Dennis, our professional standards director and Captain Scott Williams, so they can help with any perspective and also can hear what's going on. Clay Street, just, uh, as a starting point, has had some recent uptick in crime, uh, we are very concerned about any crime in the community, there is a, an overall decrease in Annapolis by seven percent in crime, however, along the corridor in, in the Clay Street community and College Creek Terrace is a hundred percent increase in crime, we have had, and again, these numbers are small, when we compare a hundred percent increase, we're talking about four crimes against eight crimes, but it is an increase and it's a noticeable increase, we've had an increase in the number of calls for service in the community, where last year we had six hundred police calls, we have over seven hundred calls now and we have had an uptick in crime overall recently in the community and I ask my officers to be proactive, I've spoken to members of the clergy along, uh, in, in the area and I've spoken to a lot of community folks who want to see more foot patrol, they want to see more police interaction, they want to see some proactive police work, so with all of that going on in the community, most recently on the twenty-second this month, Tuesday night, we had a violent robbery, uh, on Cathedral Street, in fact, we had two robberies back to back and it was very unfortunate, uh, one gentleman, Mr. Francis Hemsley, twenty-six years of age, an Annapolis resident and another gentleman, Mr. Joseph O'Leary, twenty-two of Bowie, were assaulted, one of the gentlemen was knocked unconscious and money and cell phone and various items were taken from them, from that scene, we have six or seven individuals who fled the area, uh, they were described and later confirmed some description on the, uh, video evidence that we have, they were African-American males, there was other descriptions given, uh, there were certain descriptions that were indescript, again, there was some that we could work with, with, uh, with various characteristics of the people that ran from the area, with this information, the detectives were working very closely and they continue to work very closely with our patrol officers and the bicycle officers that are working the area, with these descriptions, the officers have been asked and some of the officers worked very closely on that post constantly, including one officer who has been doing a very good job of being proactive and trying to get field interviews, of helping to identify some of these gentlemen and some of the people who may have been witnesses and suspects in this, in this incident, I know that field interviews were increased in the community, uh, I know that there were cases and there were instances where we took photographs, officers have taken photographs on their telephones of, of juveniles and of people in the community along with their identification and their, and their judgment with their field interview and the photograph to help sure the possibility that if this information is of value to the detectives, it'll be, it'll be held closely with us in the police department and we can have photographic and other identification and we've had complaints recently that we're taking photographs indiscriminately of juveniles in the area and I want to be very clear, there is absolutely no indiscriminate, uh, or partial police activity i- in the community, it, it, it very much impacts very targeted and directed police action that we're trying to bring together to help resolve a crime and an increase in crime, uh, in the community in general and specifically the robbery that we're, that we're trying our best to put, our best foot forward and investigate, so I do, I do, I am aware of, of a few people, I, I certainly know names and I'm aware of some complaints where officers, maybe one or two officers had, acting in the direction of detectives, identified, walked up to juveniles who, they're very familiar with the area, these officers, saw something, saw a description and, and had a dialogue with these folks, these, these, these children and, uh, and took photographs and, and I know that is, that is trouble some people and it is, uh, it is a, a matter of police work and from time to time, we are doing that, the mayor asked me a very pointed question today and he asked me if, if this is done in other communities and if it's been done in the past and from time to time, it has been, but this is a very specific direction, when we have to identify and we have to go about certain basic police steps, um, this sometimes is part of the toolbox that we ultimately use and we do respect the concerns of the community, we, we absolutely want to be part of a meaningful dialogue, I certainly didn't want it to get to a city council meeting where we explain general actions in front of the council as a first time, you know, uh, conversation about how this happened, it's much better for me to talk with certain members of the community, all the communities and I very much try to do that, but this came about very quickly and it came about in the last day or two that I'm, I'm hearing, uh, somewhat of a, of a, um, of a bigger voice about this and I know that there's some people that need explanations, you know, I, I spoke with Ms. Booth today, I know officers talked to Ms. Booth who had a particular concern, a very personal concern about this and I want to be part of that dialogue, but I, I do want to be very clear to anybody who, who's interested, uh, the police department is out there trying our very best to, to, uh, to help the community reduce crime, we're also respectful of the fact that if, when, when people get stopped and if this happens, there, there will be complaints, um, I looked at these, we're going to continue to look at our actions, uh, we're not tolerating, uh, missteps by the police and anything brought to my attention will be brought immediately to the attention of our professional standards director and investigated, but, uh, that's the, uh, that's the impetus and that's the reason that, 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 uh, people have been stopped and photographs have been taken of certain people, yes.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, um, chief, periodically we hear, well, first of all, is there a neighborhood watch group on the Clay Street corridor?
There's a, there's a neighborhood watch group.
I hear you saying yes?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and so they work very closely, I believe, with the officers that patrol the community, there's a neighborhood watch group?
Yeah, well, I mean, there, there are people, there are, there are more involved members than, and there are some less involved members, so we do have dialogue with the neighborhood watch group.
Okay, um, I, I heard over the weekend from several people about, um, the increase in crime in the area, uh, and I proposed to chief and I mentioned it to the mayor today that we begin having some regular meetings so that we can hear what your concerns are, not when it escalates, but ongoing, so that we can stay on top of whatever is coming and be prepared for it, um, the whole thing about every child being photographed, you know, if we had, the community had someone they could call right away, we may have been able to dispel that before it got out into the community as it did and I know that you meet with community groups throughout the city, um, but I'm thinking that maybe we need to do something on a more regular basis, monthly, quarterly, I don't know, but there has to be some closer communication than what we're, we're having right now.
But I, I, I agree and as a, as a general point, you know, we receive complaints and we investigate complaints on a continuum and we do have complaints, the police department, we have a reduction of discourtesy complaints this year when we compare ourselves to last year by about fifty percent, that doesn't mean that, uh, that, that, you know, that we can tolerate unreasonable actions, if the accusations and at best this is an inaccurate, you know, it's, it's very misleading to say that we're stopping anybody indiscriminately where it's a very bad message to put out to the children that police are the enemy or that we're making stops predicated on anything, whether it's race or, or just, uh, personal opinions, that's not what's going on here and it's not tolerated and, you know, we have to be held to account, but in this case, we're very much trying to impact a specific problem, trying our best to do, uh, you know, permissible activity and it's a fine balance that we have to respect, I'm willing to hear any complaints about our action, but we should get in front of those complaints as Alderwoman Finlayson said by having dialogue and that's, uh, what we want part of.
Chief, let me follow up, you mentioned a group of young men, are we talking gangs? And I'm a high school teacher and I don't believe every group of kids is a gang, so I don't want to go there, but, you know, tell me.
I, I think when we hear the word gang, we start thinking of a criminal enterprise and drugs and an organized group, I don't believe this has to be that at all, I think that Annapolis certainly has, has, you know, what we would call gangs or bands of people who are, who are involved in certain drug activity, this doesn't appear to be that.
Okay.
Uh, and, and it could as well be a random, you know, we certainly haven't had a lot of robberies in the area, but it was certainly, it was very much a targeted robbery and our actions have to be targeted and we're not throwing a blanket over the community, we're not making indiscriminate arrests and pulling people up willy-nilly, we're trying to be very cautious about it and I invite any complaint to the contrary, because we will investigate it and we should talk about it before it gets this far.
Well, the National Night Out is coming up next week, right? Uh, so maybe we can encourage, um, the Clay Street community, even though the event is in Ward Four, to, you know, the whole idea was to get neighbors out of their houses, out, socializing with one another, everybody turn their lights on, make the community aware that they're vigilant, so maybe we could do the same thing at the same time.
Uh, see, they have a, they have a very big National Night Out gathering every year.
On the Clay Street corner?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
None of the very best, Penrose, it's one of the very best we have, citywide.
Alderman, this, when she's done, Alderman Arnett?
May, may she be allowed to speak?
Of course, please.
Come on up, now speaking.
After, when she's done, Alderman?
Well, no, I'm just going to speak upon the National Night Out.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Yes, um, Ms. Little, student, can you please come here, please, my name is Tanya Booth and I'm the Secretary of our President Council, I'm gonna call our president, Ms. Little, you've stood up here for right now, so she can also speak here with us, um, our National Night Out is, uh, a very big National Night Out, um, we have safety, we also have Annapolis Police Department there as well, um, we have other people coming out there help for help and all, you know, um, different speakers, um, we had asked for the mayor to come out, I don't know if he's coming or not, but, yeah, but we are inviting you to come out to the National Night Out, you know, and, um, it's very, it's, it's safe and everything, you know, everybody gets along fine and it's, you know, it's a wonderful thing, but one thing that Annapolis needs to understand, the understanding of National Night Out, the understanding of National Night Out is communities getting together and cooking out and sharing food and sharing love in the community, that's what National Night Out is, it's not about you just having a community thing and everybody from this setting, I'm coming, that's not what it's about and they having fireworks that's spread downtown, that's not National Night Out, National Night Out is you have been in your community and getting along as one with your families, that's National Night Out, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Chief Priest, um, in my day, the old metaphor was, the phone is ringing off the hook, uh, these days it's text messages and emails and over the weekend, um, the phone was ringing off the hook, so I, I just want to ask a question, a very clear question and hopefully a clear answer, um, has, in your view and by your, um, information gathering, has there been any inappropriate policing activity or has it all been focused on crime solving, because that's, that's what my constituents want to hear about?
This, this is, this is, uh, crime solving, I mean, we've had, we've had no individual, there was, there was one and certainly would enter, there was one complaint about, about one person stopped, this is a general, this is a crime solving, uh, activity that we're involved in here, it's very directed and it is, and it is area-based, it's, it's, it's specific to, uh, a very recent violent crime and it's reasonable, the actions that we're seeing, that I'm seeing.
Thank you for your answer and for all you do for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, could you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry?
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Um, I'm a local, I'm a resident, I'm a resident of Annapolis, I'm a resident of Annapolis, I'm a resident of Annapolis, um, we, we are, um, for, um, as all of the people are known, um, I would like to, I would like to comment briefly on, um, some remarks in reference to, um, the focusing or public, um, and, um, being by law or, um, not having the parents there or, um...
Thank you. Not having the, the parents there to, um, protect their minors or to ensure that they are, um, their rights are being, um, taken care of, um, et cetera, et cetera, the main concern that I have is because myself and my daughter, this past year, was stopped downtown by a city officer and was held for over an hour because she thought we fit the description of two out of five young ladies who committed robberies on Route Two at the, uh, at the Harbor Center, my daughter and I, we were having dinner, I've lived in Annapolis most of my life.
They went there for a second, please, really quickly.
My twelve, she was eleven back then, we're the same height, same size, we went to dinner, hung in a pussers, um, we were, we were walking past the Alex Haley Stadium, uh, we, we were parked, uh, just behind Middleton's, we, um, was crossing over past Doc Street and we were literally almost accosted, I would say, and I was asking the, the officer what was going on, what was the problem, she asked me to stay there, very aggressively, not to move and I'm asking her repeatedly what the problem is and she wouldn't tell me, so she's calling in backup, she's in all these things and I'm like, you know, what's going on here, because she mistaken me for being younger than my age with my glasses and my hair, she, I guess she thought that my daughter, I'm assuming, I'll say I'm assuming, that we were two younger girls and we were black girls downtown, so I don't know if we were supposed to be there, like I said, I didn't know what happened, but we were sitting there for over an hour and a half, I repeatedly asked her for supervisor, I, I didn't give one, I asked, um, who was her lieutenant, she didn't tell me anyway, since she was downtown, um, I asked her what the problem was repeatedly again, she didn't say anything, I told her that, she said that we, we fit the description of someone, of, of two, of two, of two girls and I said, for what girls, where, give me some information, bless you, she didn't give me anything and she said, well, you were trying to run, she said, we saw you when you were going across the street, but you ran and I said, how did we run, we went to dinner at pussers and we came back, you know, and I walked by you the first time, you were standing by your police car, I looked at you and I smiled and I kept going, if I was running, why would I go and eat and run back by you, I don't even know what I'm running... I don't even know what I'm running from. She was very nasty, very belligerent. I called, I called the police to ask for a supervisor. And then another police came, another car came, I think, two or three cars came, and, you know, they said that the, her supervisor was coming. I found out that her supervisor was a half a block down the street, right in front of the Harbor Master. You know, okay, and then now I'm giving her my driver's license, and she wants to take my photo. First, she wanted to take a photo of me and my daughter. And I'm like, no, what do you need to take a photo of us for? I'm calling my daughter's dad, which is a, he's a retired Baltimore city officer. I reached out to a friend of mine who I believe could get a message to the police chief, because I was literally sitting there, again, with no answers as to why we were being stopped and why we were being held. And I say this because if I was a young black boy, I can imagine how they would feel if they were underage. If it was my daughter and a friend of hers and they were accosted, would she have done the same thing? And I believe that she would have. And I really think that if I had been sitting there for as long as I was, after calling 911, after asking, and I'm telling them that I'm getting help, I'm on the phone, and they're telling me to hang up my phone. If I don't hang up my phone, I'm going to get arrested. And I told them, well, you're not going to get a picture of my daughter until you tell me why. You're not going to take a picture of me and send it somewhere. I don't know what you're sending it, because I didn't commit any crime. I'm an adult. I'm 30 years old that time, and I don't get any answers. And I'm being polite as I can be. I'm doing as many things as I can do. You know, I'm not someone who's against policing. You know, I support the department. I've had an event at the Stanton Center, a few of the aldermen were there about, maybe two years ago, to direct some bad blood between the community and how they were feeling some things are going after a few murders in the cities. So I'm not that person. But I say that if that happened to me and my daughter, some of these guys who just may happen to you fit a description, and if you're in Cathedral Street and you run anywhere, of course, if you're young and black, you're going to find someone to fit the description on Clay Street. So I think it's very important that we look into this and that these officers have a protocol where, number one, minors are off limits. There has to be some kind of protocol that even if they're minors, even if they're adults, that they are getting their needs met, that they feel that someone is listening to them. Because I cannot tell you, again, the extent that I've gone and filing a complaint afterwards, being shook up, my daughter being worried to death, being scared, and going, crying, filing a report, having to do it again, not having any one of my witnesses called for investigation and being sent a letter saying that they couldn't do anything. They found that, you know, my misconduct or being held against my will, which, you know, I felt I was. We were held over an hour, like I said, for, and not being told why. I'm listening to the scanner and trying to figure out what's being said for no reason. And nothing was investigated. So something needs to be done. You know, I'm not asking to look back into what happened to myself and my daughter last year, but I wasn't even here to speak on anything, but I know that it, it needs to be something that needs to be done because it's not right to go around and just take anyone's photo and use it for... Policing has to be done. We need policing. It needs to be done the right way, because if not, it deteriorates, deteriorates the relationship between the community and the police department, and we need a partnership, and we need a mutual, a mutual respect. And it needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Apologize for what you went through. I know the chief and the team that we have at the police department work very hard, so situations like that don't happen. Thanks for letting us know. The first four people signed up to speak this evening. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Miguel Dennis, and I'm the Director of the Office of Professional Standards for the Annapolis Police Department. I'd like to address both yourself and the council regarding the complaint that you just heard. The issue with Ms. Devers and her daughter was, in fact, investigated by the police department. As she said, she did come in, she made a formal complaint. It was given to Sergeant Mark Ferguson, who was our Internal Affairs Investigator. The whole issue revolved around a lookout for two African-American females that had stolen some merchandise from one of these shops at the Harbor Center. And we were waiting, awaiting, if you will, identification from the Annapolis County Police, who were coming into Annapolis to try to ID the individuals that we had, in fact, stopped, who did, in fact, fit that description. So the matter was investigated, was thoroughly investigated by the department, and it was found that the officers acted according to the law, according to procedure, and that no violation was committed. I just want to make the council and the mayor aware of that. Thank you.
I apologize. I'll be brief.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but this is, everybody has...
I'll just say this, there were actually five young ladies that was involved, not two. There were five. They were from Washington DC with the Washington DC tag and the Honda, and that was clear. They had all that information. I showed them my ID. I'm not from DC, my car's not silver, I'm from Annapolis. It was five girls, not two. It was a big difference, and none of my, none of my witnesses were called. Thank you.
Thank you. The first four people signed up to speak are Harold Lloyd, Brenda Williams, Elvia Thompson, and Robert Eads. Good evening, Mr. Lloyd. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Harold Lloyd. I live 99 Clay Street, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here on behalf of the O'Berry Court Community Association and residents of the Clay Street Corridor. I'm very passionate about this because, as I recall, President Obama said during the Trayvon Martin incident, if I had a son, he may look like Trayvon Martin. Well, I have a son that look like the rest of these kids that have been pulled up in the Clay Street Corridor, and my son lives in the Clay Street Corridor. Now, what I'd like to know is that how many African-American males were pulled up compared to how many white males are pulled up and taken a photograph of during an incident such as what just happened? Now, I see an extreme difference of how the African-American community is treated compared to how the white community is treated. Now, two white guys were mugged on Cathedral Street. I believe that was the area that it happened in, Franklin Street? So we have the police department coming into the African-American community, grabbing the guys, taking the pictures. Two African-Americans were shot, and Alderman Kenny's won. No pictures were taken. Nobody has been coming around, you know, taking the pictures, pulling the kids up, saying, let me get this description of you. That doesn't happen in our community. If a white male assaults another white male downtown, the police doesn't go up Market Street, they don't go up Franklin Street, they don't go up Shipwright Street taking pictures of youth down here. So there's a big difference of what's going on in our community. Now, when you saying that you're not taking people randomly, I mean, what's your weight? There's different sizes. One officer said to me that we're looking for 10 and 11-year-olds. The other one, you know, we seen that they pulled him up. Yesterday, they had an 18-year-old. The other incident was a 16-year-old, 15-year-old, different heights. They look different, different complexion. So what is the criteria for who you're looking for? Maybe the community can help. But if you're coming into the community, grabbing the kids, and in one incident, the police officer cussed the kid out, not knowing that his mother was standing there looking. And the kid said, get off me. If you want to talk to me, know anything about me, ask my mother. Yesterday, sitting on private property, there was a youth. The officer came up, asked for ID. He replied, gave the officer his ID. So the officer wanted to take a picture of him. He said, no. He asked the officer, was he being detained? And the officer replied, to me, not to him. Do you want me to detain him? It wasn't on me, it was on the officer. You're doing your job as you're supposed to be doing. So the officer grabbed the kid, brought him behind the car, and as I was talking to the kid's mother and explaining what was happening, he put the handcuffs on him. And this is the crazy part. He charged him with trespassing on our private property. So when you telling me that, you telling me that these things aren't happening in our community, either you're ignorant to what's going on in our community, or you're just not listening to what's going on in our community. So the one thing that we have to do, we have to sit down and dissect this thing, really have to dissect this thing. And I don't think any of you sitting on that panel, the council, Mr. Mayor, if it was your child that an officer come up, underage, take a picture of, ask for their name and address without you being around, without your permission, how would you respond? Now, I would like to see how all of you are voting on this to say, are you for it or are you against it? Now, I know Alderman Kenny said to me on the phone call that he was for it. So, you know, constituents may be happy to hear that, and some may not. But I would like to know, how do you feel about that, and will you vote on it? And make it public. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me say, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And I remember you had called me earlier in the day, it was probably 6 o'clock on Friday, and I was getting around to my voicemail, I had about 15 of them, and then you called again at 10:30 at night, and we had a good conversation. So we on this council don't know unless the community tells us. So I appreciate you calling me, and I want you to feel comfortable calling, any hour of the night, I'll pick up. I sent the chief an email immediately after so we could work out this issue. Seems like there's a dialogue problem within the community. And I think I'd like the three of us to sit down, the chief with you, later this week, to talk about ways we can communicate better on this. I don't think there's actually something to vote on tonight in regards to taking photos or not, and Chief, if you want to address that, but I would like the chance to sit down with you so we don't have these incidents happen again in the future, or we find a way to work around it better so we're not in such a contentious state. So thank you very much. Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Lloyd, and I appreciate that you called too. And I, in fact, did call some other people in the same Clay Street corridor community to find out some of the things, and I had then had a conversation with the chief and Captain Williams. And so they usually do the work that we ask them to do, and I don't do, when I say I would, none, as far as I know, none of the officers crossed the line. They're working a serious case, and I knew that was the case. I knew there was a case there that should be disturbing to us all. So I mean, I don't, I didn't know the particulars of what you were telling me. So, I mean, the chief has gotten back to me, and there we go.
I told you the particulars.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Brenda Williams, Elvia Thompson, and Robert Eads. Brenda Williams not here, then Elvia, you're up. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Elvia Thompson, P.O. Box 3423, Annapolis 21403. We're dealing with some pretty heavy stuff here, so I'm going to kind of change it a little bit and bring you some good news. I'm here today as a co-founder of Annapolis Green to tell you about what happened at the Ellen O. Moyer Back Creek Nature Park this Saturday. Annapolis Green sponsored, was sponsored by Keep America Beautiful and Bud Light, and we led a cleanup and a refresh of the park. And the project, one of 60 around the country, was named by Bud Light, Do Good, Have Fun. And we did both. We had about 70 volunteers show up in the morning, and we assigned them to jobs that had been coordinated by the city's Recreation and Parks Department. We planted dozens of plants, we scrubbed the features in the park, including the signs and the wooden steps and the picnic tables, and we picked up litter, we hammered down protruding nails, we cut back overgrown invasive species, we screwed down dangerously loose planks on the pier, and we spread pile after pile of wood chips in the park along the trails. And you've heard of It Takes a Village? Well, we had that village. People came from as far away as Waldorf, they came to volunteer, and some came from just a few blocks away. And in addition to the main sponsorship from Bud Light, local organizations stepped up to help make it a success, largely at their own expense. Chesapeake Bay Roasting Company provided morning coffee. WRNR provided great music to help pump everybody up early in the morning while it was raining. Mom's Organic Market from Bowie provided snacks. Garden Girls provided landscaping advice and got us the plants that we purchased at a discount. The Spa Creek Conservancy provided the tools that we used, like rakes and shovels. And Annapolis Community Boating provided kayaks for litter patrol for the waterside and loads of support. Port Annapolis Marina provided its beautiful and very valuable pavilion space for the after-party, and the Chesapeake Bay Hawks, the lacrosse team, they were well represented, volunteering and giving back to the community too. Now, the generally agreed-upon value of a volunteer hour in Maryland is about $25.50, and that's a figure that's used by many philanthropic organizations. So using that number times three hours times 70 volunteers, the total value of volunteer labor donated to the city on Saturday was $5,300, a little more than that. And we also bought about $1,000 worth of plants. And in addition to the monetary value, what's important here is that the Back Creek Nature Park is a little jewel. It's used by everybody. It's a place where people go to relax and get close to nature, to walk their dogs, and to get access to the water. Annapolis Community Boating has an organization set up to take kids out who otherwise would not have access to the water. It's a wonderful thing. And also at the park, you can learn about the ecology of the area. So our goal is to organize a Back Creek Conservancy modeled very much after the Spa Creek Conservancy that's done a remarkable job with stormwater management projects that count toward the city's TMDLs, by the way, projects like the parking lot at Blackwall Hitch and the rain gardens at several car dealerships along West Street. And there's plenty to be done in the Back Creek watershed also. And saving the bay begins with doing right by the creeks and rivers. So to end this little presentation, I want to say that I was hoping that some of you would have come to the park on Saturday while we were working so you could see the whole operation in action. Alderman Kirby did come later in the afternoon, and he said that he was very impressed with what he saw, and I hope he'll tell you about it. We have a link on our website to photos of the event, and I'm going to send each of you an email so that you can see the photos as well. You could check it out on your iPads now if you want to from AnnapolisGreen.com. And finally, I want to commend, this is very important, I want to commend the employees of the Parks and Recreation Department. We planned with Marissa Widlinger and Annie Costello. On the day of the event, two parks maintenance men were on hand, theoretically, to take care of any problems or answer questions. But they worked right alongside the volunteers, and they worked hard. And I'm sorry I don't know their last names, but the first names are Trayvon and Vernon. And their supervisor, Rodney Dillard, came on his day off just to see how things were going. Almost done. I hope you'll visit the park in the near future. It really is a little jewel, and we're very proud of what we did to help the hard-working employees of the Parks Department and to give back to the city. So we're very happy to do our part. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Ms. Thompson, I did try to come on Saturday. Actually, I did come, but I guess it was too late. It was about 2:15, 2:20.
We were having the have fun part at that point.
Well, there were only two cars at the very end of the lot, and as I pulled in, two deer came out of the woods and started playing in the parking lot. It's like, they're finally gone, and we can have fun now. And I drove around through, looking for people, and they ran off into the woods where I could see them right there. One was a young buck. He had the beginning of the antlers, which I'd never seen before, they were fuzzy. But they kept looking at me and ducking down when they thought I wasn't, when I, they thought I was looking at them. They were actually hiding. So they had obviously been waiting for you guys to finish cleaning up so they could come out and enjoy. So I apologize for missing it, but I did get to enjoy the nature while I was...
Right there, deer, right there in the city. Isn't that terrific?
Yes, absolutely. So thank you for all of your efforts and for organizing it.
And Alderman Pfeiffer, I'm going to lean on you to start that Back Creek Conservancy.
All right, his word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eads, you are next.
Good evening. My name is Robert Eads. I live 32 Pleasant Street, Annapolis, Maryland. Before I get started, I'm a little confused. Mr. Mayor, after the taking that spanking that Mr. Snowden gave you, you going to keep your campaign promise or what? I was, I'm lost. I don't know. All I know, I saw you take a terrible spanking that time. Just wanted to ask you that. Ms. Finlayson, in the Clay Street area, there are no gangs. I just want to make that straight. Because here we go again, Robert Eads standing there in front of y'all with the same complaint. Now, the complaint that I was talking about, about our children not having anywhere to go, being powered up, ganged up in the streets, now all of a sudden, they're all crooks and criminals. Remember, I was telling y'all we was going to come here if we didn't do... Remember, I was telling y'all we was gonna come here if we didn't do something to create some green space or some recreation in that area? I've been saying that before you got here, Mr. Mayor, I've been saying that after you got here, Mr. Mayor. Now, we back here with the same problem. Now, the police are dealing with it, and I'm gonna call it as I see it. Mr. Prestu, you did a good job of kind of cleaning that up, but unfortunately, you're not out there to see what your officers are doing, so you can only do and talk about what you reported back to. But they're cussing out twelve year, I had some of those children here, but they didn't stay long enough, yesterday, but they're cussing out twelve year, you heard them, right in one of them, front their mothers. They are harassing the kids. If there were pictures or videos, as Mr. Prestu said, they had some type of idea, I had about five different kids, twelve year olds, stop being told, give me your ID, where your name, where you live at, and taking pictures of them. They're underage, it's racial profiling, as it is. I'm gonna call it how I see it. Because if somebody stopped my thirteen year old daughter, or my seventeen year old son, and take pictures of him, I got a concern with that. Where are those pictures going? Where would they be used later? Are you taking a bunch of pictures going in front, witnesses saying, is this one him? Is this one him putting his finger on the picture? What are you doing with this information? If you need this type of information, then children should be taken down to police station, their parents should be called and asked, can this be done? Not just pull a child up at the gas station, stop him, hold MFs, don't move right where, ask for their ID and take their pictures, and then tell them going about their business? You want a good communication with the young children in the communities, but you do these type of things to them. Young man, high school football player, very good grades in school, working two jobs on his way to work, and they come to his job and pull him off his job. You gotta fit a description of somebody, and when the people are running the job, say, hold, wait a minute, I need to call his parents, you can't just come, they get put in their place. This is unfair. Now, how do you think this young man look at his system? How do you think any of these young men in the Clay Street Quarter look at this system? Alderman Kirby, I'm offended with you when you say, no, they did their protocol. You did their protocol. Did you talk to their parent? Did you go to their child and ask them, was their protocol done? Was their rights violated? Were they talked to in a proper way? Chief Prestu, you may tell your men to do their job in one way, but they're doing it a total different way in our neighborhood. I witness it. I'm a community activist in that neighborhood. I've never been approached by officers, but I have approached many, and tell them I'm willing to work, what I can do to make my community a better place. Not against policing, I'm against racial profiling, though. I'm against picking up certain kids and identifying them. If you got a type of description, I had, and I wish they could stay, but I had five different young men back there. Five different young men back there. So, then how can you tell me, this height, that height, that height, one was big as me? And you, all of these people fit the profile? Or are you just gathering information in the black community? And I again say to this committee, this city council, I've been crying to y'all. Before this happened, I came to y'all and told y'all, my children were playing in the streets, the little ones were being, playing with the older ones, there's nowhere for them to go, and nobody's listening. Now, we to the point, I'm gonna sit down in a minute, now we to the point where our children have became, all the Finlayson, they want to know, is there any gangs? Well, they all got to play together, nowhere else to go. So, it's gonna always look like it's a bunch of kids or gangs gathering when you got nowhere to go, and I'm talking about for twelve year olds at three o'clock in the afternoon, they had nowhere to go but be surrounded with the court. So, all I'm simply saying is, I've been asking for help, some kind of way, before we got to this point, with Chief Prestu's officers following his rules of getting things straight, but not doing exactly what he want, because they're coming in there, cussing our children, cussing our parents, telling adults to mind their D business, when he's telling them that the kid is not trespassing, he's with me, he's on my property, he's a guest of mine. And the kid still gets likely to go downtown and get his picture taken. We got a problem, and I'm so mad, and I hope some of these parents sue the hell out y'all. I swear I do, because I've been telling y'all about this for years, and old Robert Eads don't know what he doing, don't know what he talking, but I play checkers real good. I see the moves coming down the road, and I keep bringing them to y'all, and everybody say, well, he's gonna say in a few minutes, thanks for your testimony. I'm not testifying, I'm asking for help. I don't want these young boys to now have a record, their prints and everything downtown, their pictures downtown, their address, so whenever something happened, they can run so, oh, we got some pictures, is these the boys here? They may be in Baltimore somewhere, but are these the boys here? Now, why? Because they got pictures of them on record. For what reason did they have a picture of them on record? For what did they do? Nothing. Racial profiling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Alderwoman Finlayson has a comment for you.
You got to say the testimony part.
Well, we're not done with it yet.
Uh, Mr. Eads?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that the group was a gang.
No, I didn't say you were suggesting, you asked the question.
I did, and I asked it.
I was gonna ask you a question, yeah.
I asked it for a reason. Because in the past, this council has done investigation of groups as gang, and we were, there was an attempt to convince us that there were gangs all over the city of Annapolis.
Yeah, I know my.
Okay? And I just wanted to be clear, this is not a gang issue.
No.
Okay? It's a group of kids, all right? I totally agree that our children should not be cursed at and abused in any form or fashion. And the chief and I will have a discussion, the mayor will do his thing, and I will do mine. Okay? I was very serious when I said, the community needs to have a dialogue, an ongoing dialogue, because we're hearing things now that obviously have been going on for some time, that we weren't aware of, and now we are. So, it does fall to us to do something about it, and we will.
And I'm gonna say this, so everybody don't take it away, there are some officers that come into that area, some female officers, I wish I was good at names, but you got some officers that come into that area, and they know how to treat people. But you got some of these new guys, and some of these that's just coming on, and they're just talking to everybody, anybody like this, and it just ain't right. And like I'm saying, this racial profiling thing, if you pull a child up and you think he's a, tell me where you live, let's go to your parent. Don't take my child's picture and take it then that I don't know what's happening with it? And I'm very serious, and y'all should think about this, y'all's parents, everybody up here, parents, would you really like for your child's picture to be downtown for nothing, no crime he's ever committed? But every time something happens, and somebody say, oh, he wear eyeglasses and he got gray hair, is this one of them? Y'all follow me? It's serious. It's serious. If you get my child and he wrong, do your job, but I don't want you just putting my child out there. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to try to talk again.
Thank you, Robert. Enjoyed it. That was the last person signed up to speak, oh, please come forward.
My name is, once again, my name is Tanya Booth, I live 136 Clay Street. The young man that he's talking about is my son, before I was pulling my son off his job. I talked to the officers, talked to the chief of police, you know, for to get this resolved. But if you can imagine how my child felt when the officers, you know, after they left, and he like, and I got there, he like, well, ma, I ain't know, I ain't know what to tell him, sir, you know, I just said, yeah, well, go ahead, take my picture. You know what I'm saying? But, mind you, I have an honor roll student. He works two jobs, one for housing, one for Jimmy John's sandwich downtown. He's the captain of his football team, he's also the quarterback of Annapolis Senior High Football Team. These officers ride up and down the street all the time. You don't see my son Leval very seldom hang outside in the street. I think it was very inappropriate for them to walk up to him and ask him for a picture. Then, they didn't even give their name. Trust me, every officer on the police force is not the same, because I do give the police department a basket every year for Christmas, to show the appreciation, that's right, for the work that they do for the city. But when it comes to you run up to children and taking pictures and stereotyping them, I feel there's a problem somewhere with that, and it needs to be addressed immediately. Because in a lot of neighborhoods, in a lot of cities, what they're doing, these children now would have probably reacted against the police department. To be truthful, I've seen it done on the news. But I'm just saying, you know, for a child like, you know, like mine's the other residence that's not out there involved in things like that, and trying to do good with their life, you know? My son is the only child that's now to get the kids the honor money at the snacking center. He's the only one that can get it now. So, I'm not gonna let no officer and anybody else of child that I brought out here just stereotype my child. You're not gonna do that. I thank you for listening to me, and I hope y'all, council, and hope that mayor, that y'all really do something about this. Me and the chief, we talked, and we will be talking again. But something needs to be done with some of his officers, and I cannot fault him, I cannot fault her, or nobody. I fault some of the officers, because there's, some of them know exactly what they're doing, and they know these children don't know that they, they're not supposed to give their name or take a picture. No, you, you can't do that. You know what I'm saying? You have a camera, yes, your officers have cameras to do a job that they're supposed to do. That's very true. But not to come into a neighborhood and say, click, 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 click. I'm not, I'm not for that, I'm sorry. I disagree with that one hundred percent. But to keep the officers, keep the officer in Annapolis Police Department, you know, far as keeping our neighborhood safe, that's what they're supposed to do, that's the oath that they take, to keep our neighborhood safe. But it's a way and a manner of doing that, and also, respect. You get respect, you come with respect. It's a way to work with these things, so we've got to find a way to work together. I hope y'all can help us out on that. Y'all have a blessed night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Please come forward. Good evening, ma'am.
My name is April Sims. For the record, my address is 10 Sandstone Court Apartment A, Annapolis, Overlook. I'm here to address a concern with the Annapolis Housing Authority. My concern is, you're evicting people out of public housing in Section Eight, because people's addresses are being used. If your child gets in trouble, who give them the right to evict the whole family? Whole families are being put out. Mayor, there's a big issue in this city that we can't afford housing here. Who can afford fifteen hundred dollars, plus water bill, gas, and electric cable? We gotta buy groceries for our kids, we not gonna have cars, transportation, there's no affordable housing here in the city of Annapolis. And something needs to be done with this. I have addressed the Housing Authority Board, one of my neighbors have been evicted, because she had an incident where she had gotten into some trouble, and she hadn't even been to court for the Housing Authority evicting her. Myself, I had an incident where my son got into some trouble, and he used my address, and they want me to vacate the premises. I don't think it's fair. Something needs to be done. We need to address this in this city. There's no affordable housing. If you go and apply for housing, you know how long the wait list is? Twelve years. We have people that are living in public housing and on Section Eight that should not be in other people's houses, because there's no affordable housing. So, what do you want us to live out in the streets? That's not fair. Then, I want to understand, how do people just be get, be able to get on the board of chairman, don't have no education, no background, no degree or anything, and you got people on the board who, I know, that have had problems in the past, but you gonna evict people because someone used your address? I don't think that's fair. I think something needs to be done in this city for affordable housing. We don't have anywhere to live. Where should we go? I mean, you're gonna go home and sleep in your warm beds tonight, and we need, our children need a place to live. And the Housing Authority knows this, they're sweeping things under the rug, it's been addressed, the news reporter knows it, they're paying people to get in public housing, they got friends that are on the board there, that are giving quote-unquote their family members housing, that has been at the bottom of the list for years, and people are wondering why they can't get housing, because their friends are on the board, and they're giving them places. And I think this is something that really needs to be addressed immediately. I want my situation addressed. I have called HUD, I have talked to Carl Payne, I have talked to Carl Insulters, and they are investigating Housing Authority. I just wanted y'all to be aware of what's going on. The Housing Authority is doing a big scandal, and y'all don't know about it, but I'm here to address it tonight, and I'm pulling the covers off. Y'all need to know what's going on with the Housing Authority. Thank you for hearing what I had to say.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony in bringing this forward. I wish Carl was still here to address the comments you had made, but unfortunately, he had left early. But I'm certainly gonna look into it personally, to make sure your concerns are addressed, because if that's what they're doing, it's just unacceptable.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing no motions in the chambers, I declare petitions, reports, and communications closed. We will take a quick five-minute break and meet back at nine-ten. We are back in session. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda will be public hearings, beginning with Ordinance O-2414, Police and Fire Retirement Plan Cost of Living Adjustments. For the purpose of providing that effective July 1st, 2013, and each July 1st thereafter, each retired member or survivor of any such retired member entitled to receive a retirement benefit as of June 30th of any year shall receive a fixed annual 2% increase above the amount the retired member or survivor had received on June 30th of the same year.
Mr. Rensted, Mr. Miller, could you please join us at the center table? Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Rensted, Human Resources Director, City of Annapolis.
Would you mind providing us with a brief presentation of the ordinance at hand?
Essentially, what this ordinance does is it changes the city code to conform with the collective bargaining agreements which were approved last October by the, um, the council. Um, and it changes us from having a segmented, um, cost-of-living adjustment, um, approach for members of the Police-Fire Retirement Plan based on which of the various versions of the plan they were in, um, to a straight across-the-board 2% cost of living for all members of the Police-Fire Retirement Plan. Um, and again, that's consistent with what was negotiated during the interest-based bargaining, um, sessions last year.
And if I may, um, I'd like to, number one, address, um, the fiscal impact note, um, because I believe there may be some, um, clarity issue. The, um, it reads, um, "By increasing the city contribution to the defined benefit pension plan as a percentage of payroll by 2% annually, um, through fiscal year 16, and then 18% thereafter." That 18% does not refer to the COLA. That refers to the total contribution the city will be making, um, once we get those 2% increments up. So I just went, you know, I didn't want, there was a disconnect quite frankly between what was written and, um, between the COLA, um, and the funding and the plan. Um, so I just wanted to abate any concerns that we're going to be giving 18% COLAs, um, in the future. Number two, um, the, just to go back to the, um, the, the funding, um, issues, the, we received a email from the, um, if you don't listen, the actuarial. When we were doing the analysis, um, you all may recall during the IBB process, um, there, there were savings, um, um, of about $1 million a year. The, the reason for that, just to refresh everybody's memory, because it's not in the, um, fiscal impact note, is that the average, um, COLA, um, for the actuarial analysis was about 3.5%. By dropping that assumption down to 2%, which is real, one was an assumption based on, um, different outcomes, which were, um, were market-driven. This is a real number. So it dropped the actuarial, um, funding requirement, um, by about $1 million annually. Um, and it also dropped the, um, the liability by about $12 million, almost $13 million. So there are the two fiscal impact, um, comments I would like to make.
Thank you. There's nobody currently signed up to speak on this. Alderman Budge?
Yeah, I have a question about the, um, open-ended nature of the 2%. Um, that as written, it goes on in perpetuity. Um, and my question is twofold. One, as I understand that that number was arrived at as a, um, from the average of inflation...
It reflects the historical average.
And recognizing that that is, that average could change over time, either up or down, do we have the ability through some mechanism to change that rate in the future? Or is this fixed?
I, I think in order to do so, you would need to negotiate, um, to make a change like that. It would, it would have to be subject to negotiation because that's how we arrived at this. And, and I, right now, your current setup is, um, is, there are three different tiers, but the one is cap, is not capped. One is capped at 4%, and then one is capped at 3%. So you're looking at different, I mean, the current structure is multi-tiered and has various levels of, of maximums, um, and the 2% reflects the historical average. But yeah, in order to, to, um, in order to make a change in that 2%, I think you would need to do two things. You'd need to negotiate it, and you'd actually have to change the plan document, which would require action by the mayor and council.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
But to that end, um, Paul, isn't it the case that as a continuation of the IBB, we're, we're negotiating moving to the employment cost index as an escalator? And if we reach an agreement there, then we could shift from this fixed 2% to the variable, uh, ECI?
Yeah, again, that would require negotiations with the Police-Fire Union. We'll start, um, negotiating related to the ECI and, and performance-based pay, I think, the first week in September with APS meeting.
So there's nobody from the public signed up to speak, but if you would like to speak on this, please come forward. Now is your opportunity. All right. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on O-2414 closed. Thank you very much. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second reader, beginning with Ordinance O-214, Water Service, the Chesapeake Harbor Subdivision, for purpose of authorizing and approving, approving an agreement regarding the provision of water service to the Chesapeake Harbor subdivision.
Is there a motion to adopt O-214 on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second? All right, we have two amendments for consideration, the environmental amendment and the Pendell-Charl's Amendment Number One. So I need a motion from the floor to amend O-214 on second reader. Is there a motion? Thank you. Um, with the sponsor of the environmental amendment, like to present on it. Alderman Lippman?
The environmental matters committee met and discussed this on last Thursday, and we reviewed, we approved the contract with some amendments that was suggested by the law office. Having to do with just, uh, clarification, um, the contract had referred to changing the rate, and it's a misnomer, we're actually changing the multiplier of the rate. And so that's, um, we've just adopted the language that was approved by both parties to the contract.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next one is the Pendell-Charl's Amendment. Alderwoman?
Uh, yes, Mayor. On page two, line 11, it's just a typographical error, and it reads, "Of which it attached." It should be, "Of which is attached here too."
All right. Thank you for finding the correction. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt O-214 as amended on second reader?
So move.
A second? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-214 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor, panel ladies?
Yes.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charl?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bill Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Yes. Which has it, the ayes or the ayes?
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-1814, Admission and Amusement Taxes. For the purposes of codifying the City of Annapolis's laws related to the admission and amusement tax authorized by the Tax General Article, Section 4-102C of the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Is there a motion to adopt O-1814 on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second? All right. There is one Budge, uh, amendment produced by Alderman Joe Budge. So is there a motion to amend O-1814 on second reader?
So move.
Second.
Alderman Budge, thank you. Alderman Budge, if you'd like to...
Yes, this is a technical change. Yes, this is a technical change. The laws of the City of Annapolis have a proper name, and there is a more proper way to refer to them than just the laws. And that's what this proposed, this amendment addresses.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt O-1814 as amended on second reader? All right, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-1814 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalides?
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charl?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-2214, Special Residential Parking District 1, State Circle, for the purpose of authorizing a resident who occupies a dwelling unit and a building located on State Circle to be eligible for a permit in Special Residential Parking District Number 1, and all other matters related to Special Residential Parking District Number 1.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2214 on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the, and members of the council, the Transportation Committee met and reports favorably on the adoption of this ordinance.
All right. Any other discussion from the colleagues? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt O-2214 on third reader?
So move. Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalides?
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charl?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-2314, Financial Disclosure for Employees and Appointed Officials, for the purpose of requiring certain City of Annapolis employees and appointed officials to file a financial disclosure statement with the Ethics Commission 15 days after commencing employment or service pursuant to their appointment, or inquiring employees or appointed officials who provide advice or counsel to the city on acquisitions or public policy matters to file a financial disclosure statement with the Ethics Commission, and making the changes necessary to the city code in order to comply with the State of Maryland ethics requirements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt O-2314 on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second? All right, thank you. We have two amendments before us, so I need a motion to amend O-2314. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second? All right. The first amendment is the Rules Amendment, we'll vote on, and then the Pendell-Charl's Amendment One, which you all should have in your possession. So would the Rules Committee like to give an overview?
Oh dear. Let me catch up with you.
I'll speak to it if you'd like.
Yeah, please do.
The Rules Committee decided that they wanted as soon as possible for new hires to have to file a financial disclosure statement. So we felt that within the first 15 days of employment would be optimum time. So that's the amendment.
All right. All in favor of the amendment? Alderman Budge?
Yes, we, we heard that the amendments said that they were modifying Page 1 or 16. Trying to look back and forth between, between the, 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 Page 1 and 16, break that forward, that it has any influence on the code. The actual code change, the code that we need to change it, remember, the, the-
Lines 12 through 17.
And it always says 15 days.
May I speak to it? I think the intent, if my memory is correct, is to go back and have all of the new hires to be able to fall under this law. As the original language was written, it would only apply to future hires. And the intent is to get current hires as well as future hires.
I, I'm completely on board with the intent.
Does that not speak to?
The amendment, what I, I'm not on board with the technical line numbering of the amendment, which actually, it, it's fine. It addresses the preamble of the ordinance, but we need to say exactly the same thing down in the body of the ordinance on page 15.
So the motion should be, or the amendment should speak to page 15, line 15 through 17, as opposed to whatever it says back in that, going back and forth-
Well, actually, it should say both. It should say both, because it talks about 15 days in both places.
Mr. Chairman, could we make that friendly amendment?
I certainly would accept it, except that I'm reading page 15, and it seems to me that it already says that. For new employees and appointed officials included in paragraph A, that they, that have not already filed a financial disclosure statement, such employees and appointed officials shall file a financial disclosure statement no later than 15 days after commencing employee or service pursuant to their employ, employment. So I'm, I'm kind of confused what it is we're fixing.
The intent of the amendment, since I brought the question up in the first place, is to address the class of employees who have already been hired, who are new and have not filed a financial disclosure, but have, will not fall under being, they will not be able to file within 15 days after commencing employment, because some of them commenced employment months ago.
But it, it says that have not already filed a financial disclosure statement. So wouldn't that pick up the people-
Line 13 and 14.
Yeah, wouldn't that pick up the people who have been hired, it's been longer than 15 days, but they have not yet filed a financial disclosure statement? I, I think we're all in agreement about what we want to get done. I'm just not sure that we're actually, I mean, I think the way it's written on page 15 is fine, because it picks up all the people who have been hired but haven't filed it, and, and basically in the future, any new hires would file within 15 days.
Well, I, I will defer to the city attorney's opinion here. What we're trying to do is prevent a situation where current employees who've been on board for, for months in some cases, are not automatically in violation of this code the instant we pass it.
Yeah, I think, let me just double check it, because I'm trying to move back and forth between screens here. Okay, so the amendment just talks about the page one. You're saying we need to add it to page 15 as well, correct?
Yes.
Just to make sure I'm on the same page as everyone. I agree, because we're adding language that says, "Or 15 days of the ordinance passing." I think you need to add that on page 15, and the lines like 13 through 17, so that you include all the current hires. So I agree that the amendment should be stretched to both spots.
How?
I would add the same language in. It shall, for new employees and appointed officials included paragraph A, that have not already filed a financial disclosure statement, such employees and appointed officials shall file a financial disclosure statement no later than 15 days after commencing employment or service pursuant to the appointment, or within 15 days after the passing of the ordinance, or, I can't remember the exact language, but that's where you'd add it on the bottom. So you don't think it's redundant? I, I don't think, it, it is redundant, but I think it's a good redundancy, if that makes sense.
Second.
I think you need a motion to amend your amendment.
What she said.
Well, that'll count. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Now I believe we have to vote on the amendment as amended, so-
Depend on it.
Oh, the second's correct. Alderwoman Pendell-Charl's.
Yes. On page 15, line 27, should read, "In real property located in the State of Maryland."
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? All right. Is there a motion to adopt O-2314 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-2314 on third reader?
So move.
Second.
Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Panalides?
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charl?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
The motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O-2414, Police and Fire Retirement Plan, Cost of Living Adjustments, for the purpose of providing that effective July 1st, 2013, and each July 1st thereafter, each retired member or survivor of any such retired member entitled to receive a retired benefit as of June 30th of any year shall receive a fixed annual 2% increase above the amount the retired member or survivor had received on June 30th of the same year.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2414?
So move.
Second reader? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2414 on third reader?
So move.
Is there a second? All right. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalides?
No.
Takes a long time to write no.
Excuse me. Alderwoman Pendell-Charl?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-2414, Special Event Applications, for the purpose of authorizing city council approval of selected special events per R-1412, implementing moratorium on administrative approvals for events at city dock, designating specific dates for the sale of merchandise in the historic district, in conjunction with only the approved special events, waiving city fees for Eastport Yacht Club 32nd Annual Eastport Yacht Club Lights Parade, and the Annapolis J.C.'s, that correct, Grand Illumination, waiving parking fees for the Maritime Republic of Eastport Tug of War, and the reimbursement of full fees to the city for the costs associated with the other approved events.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2414 on second reader? Is there a second? Second. All right. We have two amendments before us, so is there a motion to amend R-22, R-2414?
So move.
All right. The first one is the Budge Amendment. Alderman Budge?
Yes, this is a day correction in name only. The Annapolis, the, the Feed Annapolis Five-Miler and Two-Miler Fun Run Walk is listed in the resolution, is taking place on Sunday, September 13th. September 13th is actually a Saturday, and that is the intended date of the run, and so the amendment is to change Sunday into Saturday.
There we go. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The next amendment is the Environmental Matters Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be shocking, and I will oppose this. It is about adding the recycling requirement that we've done and everything else.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, I mean, yeah.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt R-2414 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Is there a second?
Oh, went on it, sure. Colleagues, I'm, I'm concerned about the number of events that we're approving through this. It's an awful lot of runs. I know the city likes to run. We've all heard many complaints about the number of events. Obviously, we've got pending legislation that seeks to address these issues on a bigger scale, but I'm somewhat uncomfortable in approving this many events. And so I just wanted to discuss it before we get into a vote.
Alderman Budge?
If I may, and ask Ms. Nolan to join us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Belisha Nolan, Special Events Coordinator for the City of Annapolis. There are two added runs as compared to last year. Last year's events of the second half of the year is what we're doing right now. The runs all fall in when they should. There's from October, I'm sorry, from April until October. There are four runs that we permit, and that's what we're going with. And as of right now, this is, we have three. And then the other race that was added is December 27th, which is after the timeframe from Thanksgiving to Christmas, when, you know, none are allowed. And so this would be after. So it's, and there was one that was last year that was taken off, that they did not happen this year. So it's almost like one's taking the place of the other.
If the event legislation that is pending was passed and was applied right now, would all these events be approved?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion from our colleagues? Alderman Arnett?
On a slightly different vein, and we discussed this at the Finance Committee this afternoon, we are, again, waiving a lot of fees, and I'm, I'm happy not to be on the hot seat for the Lights Parade, but we will have to come to a council policy on waiver of fees, just like we will have to come to the courtesy parking. The city is giving away an awful lot of revenue and an awful lot of overtime and things like that. And I think we're going to have to really address that and make sure that's what we want to do. But fortunately, we escape another year.
Alderman Lippman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that point, as I read this, this resolution, yes, resolution, waives the fees just for the three events, right? The Lights Parade and the two others, but not all of the runs. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
That's correct.
Mr. Miller, can you tell us how much money the, waiving the fees for those three events would add up to?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, I thought you meant Mr. Miller would have that.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Miller, do you have that?
I heard. Actually, no, I do not have the information in front of me.
Looks like we might have a-
Oh, last year for the Lights Parade, yes, it was $5,500.
For just the Lights Parade? It is a significant amount to Alderman Arnett's point.
Well, the other, the other thing we need to discuss, though, for example, the Lights Parade is a good example. First of all, that's not a function that generates money for the yacht club. It's something that's done for the benefit of the community and actually costs the yacht club money every year. But the other issue is there are services that are being rendered and would be charged for that the yacht club isn't asking for. And so it seems to me that the police are providing this overtime service because they feel it's needed, rather than because it's being requested. And this is not the only example. So I think we do have to have a discussion with our directors, saying, "How much of this is because you feel the need to do it?" Which I would argue is providing the services we're paying you to, versus the particular event requesting that you provide this service. So there's still a lot of things that we have to flesh out, and it's- So there's still a lot of things that we have to flesh out, and it's, you know, our best thing is postponing, and we're doing it some more.
I share that sentiment, and as I've said before, I'm concerned about waiving all the fees like we do so routinely. We come up with a budget that we're, all concern has its flaws, and then we seem to exasperate it as the year goes on, but I'm not prepared to do, uh, to make a change on this in this instance.
Alderman Buck?
Yeah, from the, uh, further point on the waiving of the fees, um, the fees that we are waiving in this case are identical to the, or the events are identical and to last year in getting their fee waiver, um, which means the receipt of those fees is not baked into our budget. Um, so it has no, it has an opportunity cost, clearly, um, but not an immediate fiscal impact. Um, and I heartily endorse the notion that we need to track these and understand what these opportunity costs are and do them, and approach them in a much more deliberate fashion, but that is not tonight's issue.
I appreciate the clarification. That's a, that's a good point.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, I would just like to remind particularly the Finance Committee that, um, there is the issue of overtime in the police budget that is going to have to, need to be addressed, to the tune of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So just keep that out in front of us, so that, uh, when we're getting our quarterly reports and they're over budget, we will understand why.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion to adopt R-2214 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yeah. Um, Mayor panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Buck.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-2514, the Approval of a Community Legacy Andor Strategic Demolition and Smart Growth Impact Fund Application, Bowman Building, for the purpose of approving the application and receipt of financing for community, community legacy projects and/or strategic demolition and smart growth impact fund projects in the City of Annapolis for the Bowman Building redevelopment to be financed either directly by the Department of Housing and Community Development or of the state of Maryland, or through other departments or agencies of the state of Maryland.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2514 on second reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Alderman Buck?
Uh, for both this resolution and the subsequent one, R-26, um, I suggested to the Housing and Welfare Committee uh, that we amend the legislation to include the street address, uh, because none of us know where, knew where the Bowman Building was. Um, and certainly someone in a granting agency somewhere that's reading this is, needs a little bit more specificity. Uh, I understand that, um, staff is recommending, since the street addresses may change around with the redevelopment, uh, that in lieu of giving a street address, we attach the, um, description and picture that is included, um, with the, in the legislative packet uh, to the, um, to the resolution itself. Um, and so I hereby move that as an amendment, uh, so that the resolution will have some specificity as to what it applies to.
All right. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Amendment passes. Is there any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Buck.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-2614, the Approval of Community Legacy Andor a Strategic Demolition and Smart Growth Impact Fund Application, Newtown Twenty, for the purpose of approving the application and receipt of financing for community legacy projects and/or strategic demolition and smart growth impact fund projects in the City of Annapolis for the Newtown Twenty Redevelopment Project, to be financed either directly by the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state of Maryland, or through other departments or agencies of the state of Maryland.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2614 on second reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Same amendment?
Similar amendment, same, exactly the same rationale, uh, to attach the Housing Authority Properties map, uh, to the resolution, uh, to identify the property in question.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. If there's no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Buck.
Aye.
The motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolutions on First Reader, beginning with Ordinance O-2614, Special Residential Parking District Two, Shipwright Street, for the purpose of removing the area on Shipwright, Shipwright Street, Zoned WME, and the area adjacent to the WME zone on the southwest side of Shipwright Street from Special Residential Parking District Number Two, and providing that a resident who occupies a dwelling unit in a building located in the WME zone on Shipwright Street shall be eligible for parking permit in Special Residential Parking District Number Two.
Is there a motion to adopt O-2614 on first reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion to adopt O-2614 on first reader, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Excuse me.
The ayes have it. I refer O-2614 on first reader to the Transportation, Public Safety Committee and the Transportation Board. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-2714, authorizing the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade as an official City of Annapolis co-sponsored event, for the purpose of authorizing the annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade as an official co-sponsored City of Annapolis event due to its importance and significance to our country and our community.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2714 on first reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I refer R-2714 on first reader to the Finance Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd welcome other sponsors on the legislation.
Okay. Good, I, I didn't hear what you said.
I said I would welcome other sponsors on the legislation.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll like my name indeed, oh, add it as a sponsor.
And mine as well.
All right. All right. Record will reflect that. Thank you. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Resolution R-2814, honoring Brian Woodward's service to the City of Annapolis for the purpose of honoring Brian Woodward's distinguished service to the City of Annapolis.
Is there a motion to adopt R-2814 on first reader?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, could I request that you read the resolution aloud?
We shall. I'm gonna present it to him. I have to get...
If you're gonna do it officially later, then we, we...
We can do it now. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you the city council citation in recognition of your dedication, your professionalism and talents to the City of Annapolis, both as Recreation and Parks Director, and most recently, as Acting City Manager. As Acting City Manager, you were instrumental in finalizing the budgets, worked to improve communications and involvement of the order persons, helped resolve significant issues in transportation, partnered with the county, health departments, among numerous other things. As Recreation and Parks Director, you led the city's effort to battle childhood obesity and other health and wellness issues for our city's children. It's not in here, but I'll mention that we were number three on Michelle Obama's Let's Move campaign in the nation, and I congratulate Mr. Woodward on that. You also strengthened the department, streamlined and improved services, and organized for the future. Overall, you are being honored tonight for bringing consistency, dependability, and the highest professional standard to the position of Recreation and Parks Director and Acting City Manager. You have been a mentor to many, a leader to the city, and an inspiration to all who have worked with you. We, the members of the city council, wish you fair winds and following seas, and much success in your future endeavors, given under our hands and the great seal of Annapolis on this twenty-eighth day of July, two thousand and fourteen. Before we vote, I just want to say that when we were looking for a replacement for City Manager, I know many of my colleagues, Brian Woodward's name came to the top of the list. The position's not easy. It's extremely difficult. It bears a lot of stress and responsibility. And I personally would not have been as successful as I was, nor this council, if it wasn't for him stepping up. So I just want to personally thank you and appreciate all the hard work you've given. Most people don't realize the fifty, sixty hours of work he puts in every week, nights and weekends, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll vote. Is there a motion to adopt R-2814 on second reader?
Motion.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Alderman Lippman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer? Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
And Alderman Buck.
Aye.
Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous Items, beginning with Budget Revision Request, GT-2214, Fund Transfer Public Works.
Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for GT-2214?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, the Finance Committee considered this at, uh, our recent meeting and voted, uh, favorable recommendation.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to approve the budget revision GT-2214, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT-2314, Settlement Law Office. Oh, sorry. My apologies. It is GT-215.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for...
Ms. Mayor, I'm confused about the number. Isn't it, uh, GT-2314?
No. That's correct. There's one for fiscal year fourteen and then one for fiscal year fifteen. The, this one, um, is the transfer for fiscal year fourteen, um, for the dispersment of a, um, Ms. Hardwood's settlement agreement. So that is a fourteen.
Yeah, it was GT-2314.
How it appears in your iPads is twenty-three, fourteen.
Can I ask one other clarifying question? Are you suggesting that we have two GTs in front of us regarding this settlement agreement tonight?
No, just one.
Okay, thank you.
But two pertaining to the law department. I think that's where the confusion is.
Yes, 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 yes.
Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for GT-2314?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT-215, Approval of Contract Position Law Office.
Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for GT-215?
Sorry, point of order isn't, it said two fifteen. I have this as twenty-five, forty-five.
We had to remove it.
At the, at the very beginning, there was an amendment that changed it.
Well, question, is that in our, because I'm not seeing it either on our...
Remember, this is the one we talked about in Finance. It was labeled twenty-five fourteen, but it's actually fiscal fifteen dollars.
Okay, but it is twenty...
So it became two fifteen instead of twenty-five fourteen.
Okay, but on our documents... Okay. Great, thank you.
So for purposes of following along, it's the same information, just the number changed?
Correct, yes. It was changed, um, at the very beginning of the agenda, at approval of agenda, that Mr. Mayor made up motion.
Just fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Alderman Lippman?
I would just ask for clarification from the law office of, is the intent to keep this position ongoing indefinitely? Should this be, is this really a request to have an extra attorney indefinitely? Or is this to replace, or just to address the fact that we don't have a city attorney that's been approved? I'm just trying to understand the context.
As far as I'm aware, um, from, based on the Acting City Attorney, this is an indefinite appointment at this point. Um, we are, the new vision of the law office is to use less outside counsel, outside counsel, which is significantly more expensive, is less time-effective because they're not on-site, and you don't always get the best product because they're not on-site to talk to city employees and cities officials, and instead take some of that money and put it towards an attorney who is on-site, who can interact on a daily basis, um, and work with people, and assist both the Acting City Attorney as well as the city clerk and the Legislative and Policy Analyst. We think it's a better product overall.
Has that been the practice? I realize that was the intent coming in, so has that, that manifested?
Yes, with, since the new administration has come in, um, there has been a significant decrease in the use of outside counsel, and much more of the legislation in particular, which is what outside counsel money was going to, has been done in-house by the position that's up for approval and the Acting City Attorney himself.
So I get all that, and I'm, I'm good with all that. I guess then the follow-up question is if, if the administration agrees with all that, then why aren't we making this a permanent position rather than a contract position, so that they, this attorney would get the benefits?
I would say there's, there's a cost savings, one associated with it, and two, kind of logistics through the last budget process, or Brian Woodward, if you want to...
Brian Woodward, I'm still the Acting City Manager. Generally, when we put in a new position that hasn't been budgeted in the past, we try to put it in as a contract to make sure that we have an experience factor, so that if it goes forward in future budgets as a career position, we have a track record and we can justify the expenditure. So this is not an uncommon practice for us. We, we put in positions as contract positions as kind of a safeguard to make sure that our initial thoughts are accurate and that we truly do need something on a career full-time basis.
Okay. Well, then I'll just conclude by saying, I, I think the law office does a terrific job. I know you, as a whole, you handle an immense amount of work. I know I've been the cause of some of that work, and I know my colleagues are also the cause, so I, it, I'm not questioning the need for legal services or the quality of it. You guys do a terrific job. I just wanted to better understand the context. I just wanted to better understand the context.
Absolutely. Anytime you have any further questions, feel free to shoot them our way.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
I was just putting it back in for my colleagues, gonna offer that before the Finance Committee, the Acting City Attorney came for us and sort of laid out what you cleaned here, but that hanging over this obviously is potentially an appointment by the mayor for a city attorney that, when confirmed by this council, might have their own ideas about how to change things in the office. So sort of having that flexibility and everyone being aware that that is always a possibility, you know, I think it sounds like it's a win-win if everyone's sort of aware of that potential change.
Alderman Arnett?
So to amplify that a little bit, in speaking with the Acting City Attorney, I was concerned about fairness to Carrie, and was she fully aware of the uncertain nature and still agreeable to take on the work? And I was told that she is aware and very much wants to stay with the city even with that ambiguity.
Any other discussion from the council? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 2614, DPW Fleet Maintenance System.
Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for GT 2614? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Littman?
Just, I have more information. This is the first time I've seen, other than in the packet, but reading this packet was the first time I came across this, so just like to better understand what the request is about.
Brian?
The city went with a consultant a few years ago to look at our fleet management, and they kind of determined we don't do fleet management here. We have a lot of issues, and we have a lack of control over our fleet, our use of fuels, our use of materials, and the recommendation strongly came out that we go to a fleet management system, and we put it under the Public Works Department. We took the first step towards that earlier this year when we approved the hiring of a fleet manager. We actually were fortunate to get a highly qualified fleet manager who had run the fleet for Anarod County, and Anarod County has an excellent fleet management system. The next step now is to give that fleet manager some tools that he needs in order to do that, and the software to do the fleet inventory, the fleet management, the statistics and all that is the next step, and this purchase would allow us, after an appropriate bidding and after appropriate vetting system of what is the right system for the city of Annapolis, hopefully this would be enough money for us to acquire a system that we could use to manage the fleet that we have. Mr. Budge raised the point that $50,000 may not be enough to do a fully fitted out fleet management system, but I think it'll put us in the ballpark, and if we have to make budget adjustments, Mr. Miller would be happy to find us.
We'll turn it over to Director Miller on that note.
Yes, thank you. And just a little bit more information. If you notice, this is a budget transfer for fiscal year 14, because those funds have been appropriated in fiscal year 14, and if we do not do this transfer, we will not be able to encumber those funds, and we'll have to use fiscal year 15 funds for that purpose. So this is really allocating and using the funds that have already been appropriated so that we do not impinge or minimally impinge the fiscal year funding.
And is the best estimation that 50,000, I heard what you said about not being quite sure, but is the best estimation that 50,000 is assumed to be about right, or is this the first of many requests?
I don't think I know the answer to that question, and as they begin to look at systems, I'm sure they'll find a wide range of solutions, some hosted solutions, some where you own them, and I think that there's much to be discovered about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT 2714, DPW Enterprise Fund Transfer.
Is there a motion to approve the budget revision request for GT 2714? No move.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same general question, just like more information. I'm also looking specifically to better understand, are we moving these facilities or just changing which budget is responsible for it?
Director Miller?
Yes, I'm sorry. As a point of order, this control number should be 1-15. This is using fiscal year 15 funds, so if you can make an adjustment, the numbers and the explanation stand, but it's just a control number.
I don't have it either.
2714 is really now 115?
Please say that one more time, Alderman Arnett.
2714 is now 1-15?
Was that not on the agenda?
I'm in the agenda to add it.
2714, but now on the iPad, it is listed as GT 115?
That's the Harbor Master seasonal salary? Is that the subject?
Sure. Does the motion and the second discussion? You want a clarification?
Sure. Yes, I'm looking for that information to better understand what this is about.
Sure. Do you want to handle it, Bruce? Or you want Director Walters?
I'll take this one, right. The agreement with, after the Crabble Committee looked at the uses of downtown, the city park and the Harbor Master area, Marketplace and all of, the city agreed at that time to provide restroom facilities after hours, to stay open at least until the bars let out and most people got home. For a long time, that was at the Harbor Master office while Marketplace was being developed. Once Marketplace was opened, it was, the decision was made to move those 24-hour restrooms to the Marketplace and close the ones at the Harbor Master. There have been significant problems at the Marketplace, including when the morning cleaners come in to, they find homeless people or people sleeping in the restrooms. It's become a source of complaint from the tenants of the Marketplace that they're disrupting their business to have those things open and to have some of the inappropriate activities that are happening down there. So we think one solution is to reopen the restrooms at the Harbor Masters office, and that's what this appropriation does. It moves the money from Public Works to Harbor Masters so that they can open up those restrooms, and it solves a couple of problems. One is, it takes some of that inappropriate activity and moves it away from the Market House, and hopefully that will make some of our tenants there more successful and make the Market House more successful in itself. We get more actual stalls and more actual toilet space, if you will, by moving it back to the Harbor Masters office. The Harbor Master office will use this money to hire staff who will monitor the appropriateness of behaviors, call police, lock the doors if there's problems, but in addition, the additional staff, while they're there, will be Harbor Masters staff, and they'll be able to collect fees from voters who come in late at night or people who decide to leave early before paying their bills, and we believe there will be an increase in revenues, not 25,000 worth of revenues, but some proportion of that 25,000, whereas at Marketplace, we don't have any of that revenue potential at all. So we believe, and we will monitor this, that it'll be better for Market House not to have to have its restrooms open 24 hours, and we've already begun this process. And then, the only question is, the new location, will that mean that people will go back to previous behaviors, which is being inappropriate in people's yards and in places where they shouldn't be urinating and doing inappropriate activities? And that's what we're going to monitor to see if those behaviors return. In the two weeks that we've tried this, so far, we have not observed a return of those kind of things, but we'll be particularly sensitive to any complaints and try to address them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question?
Auto woman, Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Woodward, is the Harbor Masters office open 24 hours now?
No, it is not. Well, it is now after these two weeks, but it's open till 2:30 in the morning. So we have, previously our staff stopped work before we'd made this change at 10 o'clock? What time did you cease operations? 9:00 p.m. And now they're open till 2:30 p.m.
Okay. You've addressed my concern and you're monitoring it. The Crabble report was very specific about its concerns, and when we redeveloped the Market House, it was with the intent and successfully so, in putting the restrooms, adding restrooms so that it could accommodate the needs, so.
But I think the reality is, we didn't add restrooms. We closed the Harbor Masters restrooms and opened the.
Well, we did enlarge the restrooms at the, we added more stalls at the Market House.
There's more stalls at the Harbor Masters.
Well, I'm, okay, we added more stalls than what were previously there.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so that was my question, and you're monitoring it, or someone else will be?
This is a reversible action. If we find out that it's a terrible mistake, we can reverse it.
Okay, thank you.
And.
Alderman Budge?
Yeah, I would like to add that we had a long conversation about this this afternoon in the Finance Committee meeting, because I especially am sensitive to the results of the Crabble report, and the monitoring is going to be key, and I appreciate the city's effort to be proactive in doing so.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I just could interject, that the outcome of that conversation was that the Finance Committee made a favorable recommendation on this, on this GT, but we also sort of raised the issue that we may want to, because we're now four years past Crabble, a number of the issues, when you're just speaking about public restrooms, there's, you know, there was conflicting recommendations. We had, you know, we've now built up the Hillman Garage bathroom, so the question is that it's probably due to, at some sort of work session or some sort of venue, to have sort of a look back on all of Crabble and what we've done and what was left undone, and maybe with some of the stakeholders and all the, some of the key department heads, it would probably be a worthwhile exercise sometime this fall to get into and have a second look at it, because I think as we get further away from it, there was a lot of sense of, you know, this seemed really important to folks, and how do we value that as you monitor that going forward, and it'd be a worthwhile recommendation.
Administration will definitely make sure the department heads get together on that. And then I guess we should brag about the Market House for a little bit, since we're talking about staying open late. For those who don't know, the Flappa Place is open till 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning on Fridays and Saturdays. We also have recycling in there. We also have free wireless internet, and we're looking in the charging stations. So if you're ever downtown and you need a place to plug in your phone, hopefully we'll have that in the near future. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is AP 0614, Appointment of Terry Coker-Petersen to the Art in Public Places Commission.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Terry Coker-Petersen to the Arts in Public Places Commission?
No move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The rules in city government interviewed Terry, and we were impressed with her resume, but even more impressed with her enthusiasm, and we highly recommend to the council her as a candidate for this job.
Thank you for the comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is AP 0714, Appointment of Sandra Chapman to the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis Board of Commissioners.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sandra Chapman to the Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis Board of Commissioners? Is there a second? All right. Yes, discussion? Would you like to go first, Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, I believe that, right now, just in light of what has happened tonight, I believe that I'd like to have Ms. Chapman in front of the Housing Welfare Committee in September, so I'll move for postponement.
Any discussion from my colleagues? Alderman Pfeiffer?
Mr. Mayor, just regardless of what happened tonight, did Ms. Chapman appear before your committee at your last meeting?
Okay. Thank you. I guess we don't have to relive all the events that took forward at the beginning of the meeting about the Housing Authority Board. One of the things I've done, you know, as mayor, has kind of viewed this as a team effort when it comes to appointments, and several of the Aldermen have brought people forward to me and have appointed them. I think we've worked well together on majority appointments. We just appointed one for Arts in Public Places Commission, try to make these as nonpartisan and nonpolitical as we can. That being said, the mayor makes the appointment, the council confirms, and I think that's a good thing. I think it's good that you check on my appointments. I feel very strongly about Ms. Chapman and the role she can play. She formally served on the Housing Commission for the City of Annapolis, and I think she would do a wonderful job serving again. Recently was part of my transition team, so brings a fresh look and new approach to all the things that have come there. She's actually in the audience tonight, patiently waited till what time is it, 10:25 through this, so I would hope that we could take a vote on it today rather than delay. Alderman Littman?
Mr. Mayor, I'm a member of the Housing Committee meeting, and I was not able to attend the last committee meeting, and I certainly take that role seriously of the, each committee that we're on when we review appointments, and I would have liked to have the opportunity to be a part of the committee that reviews the applicants.
Well, if she's here, if you'd like to ask any questions?
I think in a committee setting, the committee gets, where we have the committee chair leading the discussion, I think is the, it's a good format and policy that we have, so I endorse that.
Alderman Arnett?
Mr. Mayor, I totally subscribe to the prerogative of the mayor to appoint, hopefully often with recommendations from the council, but I also subscribe to the process where we have the committee, the appropriate committee, interview the candidate. I think there's a lot of strength. That's a relatively new process that we entered in the last administration, and I think the candidates appreciate it as well, that the council takes the time to hear them out. I have to admit, I really don't know Ms. Chapman. I suspect that she's a very good candidate and very qualified, but I would feel more comfortable having had the committee do the normal interview process and report back to us so that we have the sense that those three members have done their due diligence and can give us a recommendation.
Was she beyond the next meeting in September?
Yes, yes, and I know Ms. Chapman. I have absolutely no qualms that she will come through committee. Not for a minute, but my colleagues may have questions, and they should be given that opportunity.
All right. So there was a motion and a second to postpone it. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Apologize you had to wait this long, but I will look forward to the meeting in September and hope it will be first. Alderman Kirby, can we have your word? It'll be first.
She's talking about the council agenda, and, yeah, it'll be first in my agenda, but I thought we had said we would move appointments up to the beginning of the agenda from this point on. I mean, it is horrible for the appointments to have to wait this long.
And I agree with you on that, nation. All future appointments.
I would have come before the committee if I had been asked to before, but please, get in touch with me and let me know when the committee would like to meet with me. I'll be honored.
It'll be your honor, Director.
I bet.
It'll be the first meeting. Again, I apologize for making you wait. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
But there's no Fred.
We're in session forever. There being no other.
I have a friend.
Yes.
I move, we adjourn.
Hold on. Wait, one second. Pursuant to Charter Section 4, meetings, the City Council will not meet in the month of August, except upon the written request of five alderpersons, the City Council may call and emerge. call an emergency session. Now.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
[inaudible]
But please, get in touch with me and let me know when the committee would like to meet with me. I'll be honored.
It'll be your honor, isn't it?
I bet.
It'll be the first meeting we've, again, I apologize for making you wait. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
But there's no Fred.
We're in session forever. There being no other.
I have a friend.
I move we adjourn.
Oh, hold on. Wait, one, one second. Pursuant to Charter Section Four, meetings, the city council will not meet in the month of August, except upon the written request of five alderpersons, the city council may call an emergency session. Now.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
[inaudible]
I would have come before the committee if I had been asked to before. But please, get in touch with me and let me know when the committee would like to meet with me. I'll be honored.
It'll be your honor, isn't it?
I bet.
It'll be the first meeting we've, again, I apologize for making you wait. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
But there's no Fred.
We're in session forever. There being no other.
I have a friend.
I move we adjourn.
Oh, hold on. Wait, one, one second. Pursuant to Charter Section Four, meetings, the city council will not meet in the month of August, except upon the written request of five alderpersons, the city council may call an emergency session. Now.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.
[inaudible]
They're all four of them.
I see him.
It's beautiful, isn't it?
They have different colored spoons.
Behind us.
Dizzy, you're a kid. Can you imagine how dizzy you are?
He's like straight up in here.
Yeah, regular play with stall, that kid. Wouldn't, wouldn't regular play going straight up stall?
Where, where Junior go? Meet up with him.
Just like, just like at the amusement park.
About exactly.
That pretty bizarre.
Yeah.
The other airplane's gonna come right out here again.
Here he comes.
Wow.
That's as slow as I can go.
Think of Buzz and do something funny.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, man, he, he wants to blow his ass off.
He says, he's like, "Come at it."
Almost Stalin's scheme.
Now, now they're gonna kick in the afterburners.
Yeah, they're almost Stalin.
Here we are, 2013. We all depend on technology to communicate, to bank, and none of us know how to read and write code.
The first program I wrote asked things like, "What's your favorite color?" Or, "How old are you?"
I wrote a program to play Tic Tac Co.
I first learned how to make a green circle and a red square appear on the screen.
You're just trying to make something, trying to transfer something from your mind to the computer or to, to a tablet is, uh, it's, uh, it's an experience.
The whole limit in the system is just that there just aren't enough people who are trained and have these skills today.
The programmers of tomorrow are the wizards of the future. You know, you're gonna look like you have magic powers compared to everybody else.
Great coders are today's rock stars. That's it.
Welcome to another edition of All Around Annapolis. I'm Susan Steckman with the Annapolis and Anorundal County Conference and Visitors Bureau, and I'm happy to have as my guests today Erin McNaboe and Brandon Litten from the Ramshead Group. It's good to have you here, Erin. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks a lot.
I'm so happy to have them with me today as we talk about all of the many events that will be taking place in and around Annapolis. The month kicks off on August one with the Annapolis Rotary Crab Feast, which is not to be missed. They're talking about consuming maybe three hundred twenty bushels of crabs this year, as they've done in past years. And it's their sixty-ninth year, so they really have it down to a system. I know that when I've gone in the past, I just look at it as a well-oiled machine. They have everything in place, and everybody who comes seems to know exactly where they want to go first. And then that same weekend is the Saint Mary's College Governor's Cup Yacht Race from Annapolis to Saint Mary's City. And there's about a hundred boats that participate in that, and it's a seventy-mile journey down to Saint Mary's. And it's an overnight event that a lot of people come to Annapolis to wish them well and bon voyage on the, on the journey. But then, of course, the big event that we're here to talk about today happens on August sixteen. It's the Silipanna Music Festival that will be taking place at the Fairgrounds in Crowesville. And that's why Erin and Brandon are here with us today. Erin, maybe you could tell us a little bit about how this event got started a couple years ago?
Sure. Well, you know, the first, I guess, interesting fact about Silipanna is that Silipanna is actually Annapolis spelled backwards. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the leading fact that most people don't know, and, and really kind of the fun fact that we like to, to talk about. But, uh, but really Silipanna is all about, um, kind of the Ramshead evolving in the music history for our business. So, you know, I guess sixteen years ago Ramshead kind of started to dabble in the music industry world with concerts, and we opened Ramshead on stage here in Annapolis. And that facility has grown over the years. It's a three-hundred-seat club. We have more than four hundred concerts a year here in that facility. But over the years, we've grown, and we've grown into Baltimore a lot. We opened Ramshead Live almost ten years ago. That is a sixteen-hundred-person, general-admission facility, and we have about two hundred concerts there a year. And then we also run Pier Six Pavilion, which is an outdoor amphitheater on the water that holds about forty-two hundred people. So really, as we've continued to evolve in our music world, we talked about how do we continue to bring that back to Annapolis and Anorundal County where everything really got started and where our roots as a company are. And when we started to talk about that, we really wanted to do a music festival. And, um, and so we talked about, all right, how are we gonna bring it back? How are we gonna bring it back? And we stumbled upon, let's do a one-day music festival. And, uh, and that was, there was a lot of brainstorming associated with that, and that started in, um, two thousand and eleven. And there were a lot of names thrown out there in trying to figure out what we should call it. We actually talked about calling it the Old General at one point, um, 'cause there was, it's right off of General's Highway, um, at the Fairgrounds, and there's some story there about the General's March that happened down General's Highway. And we thought maybe that would be an interesting name for the festival, but we really thought that Silipanna stood alone. You know, it sounds kind of funny, but it also has some interest to people here locally. And once you kind of have that inside information that in fact it does spell Annapolis backwards, it really means even more to the people here locally. So that is kind of how Silipanna was, you know, born. And in two thousand and eleven, we launched the first lineup, which included Sharon Jones and the Dap Kings, Matt and Kim, Trumbone Shorty, Fitz and the Tantrums, and sixteen other bands, and three stages. And, and we were really excited about that lineup. And unfortunately, Mother Nature had other plans for us, and on Tuesday of that week, Hurricane Irene really started to pick up speed, and we had to make the call before the bands loaded up and started their trucks down from New York and all over the country to, to cancel, which was a really difficult decision. But in hindsight, it was the right one, as Hurricane Irene, as many of us know, did come right into the area on that Saturday night and, uh, and did do a lot of damage in the area. And so thankfully, all of our customers and our bands and everybody was safe, but it was a really difficult decision.
And then you were able to bring it back in two thousand and twelve?
Yeah. So two thousand and twelve, we were back, and we had Cake and Citizen Cope and G-Love and Robert Randolph and.
Jay Roddy Wollstone and the Business.
Yep. And Jimmy's Chicken Shack and, um, a variety of other bands that.
Yeah, there's like fourteen other bands, including Locals and a couple, couple singer-songwriters, Yuna, Audra May.
Joe Pug.
Et cetera, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and Food Trucks and.
Yeah, lots of DC Food Trucks. Uh, there was like, um, a variety of, you know, we wanted to make sure that the, that that was an experience, and it wasn't just like hot dogs and chicken fingers like you can find at every other concert. So, you know, we found these food trucks that had like some quirky, different offerings. And, uh, so I, I really think that's, that's something that we add in, that so it's not just a music festival, but it's also an experience.
Well, it seems like every year you've added to the event, and from our earlier discussion, what you said about two thousand and fourteen is just unbelievable. Flaming Lips are one of your headliners, Dashboard Confessional, Matt and Kim, and then so many others. And I understand you, Brandon, had a lot to do with the selection of the groups this year. Is that true about you?
Yes, guilty.
So how does one begin to do that, Brandon? How do, how do you begin to narrow it down from all the possibilities? And how do you decide what's best for our Annapolis-area audience?
Little napkin, big budget.
Um, you know, a dartboard with a bunch of, no. Honestly, uh, it's a team effort, something that we meet about ad nauseam, probably. And we, um, you know, you come up with your, your wish list, and you prepare to tear that completely apart, and then you come up with what's left of that and what you can support that with, and, um, hopefully you end up with a great lineup. It's something that constantly changes until you've got it nailed down. It never ends where it begins, and, um, it's just a lot of hard work and persistence. And, um, you know, as far as nailing down musical taste, you know, you sort of have faith that, um, that, you know, you know that there's lots of great music fans in Annapolis and that they're very eclectic, and that you're hoping that you're putting together a great eclectic lineup that can appeal to anyone.
Well, I've mentioned a few of the groups that'll be performing, but the list is very long. Do you want to tell the audience a little bit more about some of the other groups that will be coming?
Sure. Well, I think, and also just to tap in to talk about that point as well as the teamwork, you know, the week that we were announcing the shows, um, we were working really late at night until the wee hours. And, um, you know, we confirmed bands like the night before or two nights before we were announcing, and Brandon and myself and our graphic designer Travis, we were all there until like ten or eleven at night, got the confirmation that like Sleeper Agent had confirmed, which is a band that has like the number one track right now on, um, Alter, Alt-Nation. And so, you know, there's like high fives in the office at, you know, eleven or twelve at night. So that like team camaraderie is really important in kind of, you know, keeping us all going as we're, you know, having these late nights and eating pizza and trying to get this all going. So segueing into your question, like Sleeper Agent is one of these bands that we're really excited about, um, coming.
Yeah, lots of DC Food Trucks. There was like a variety of, you know, we wanted to make sure that that was an experience and it wasn't just like hot dogs and chicken fingers like you can find at every other concert. So, you know, we found these food trucks that had like some quirky, different offerings. And so, I really think that's something that we add in, so it's not just a music festival, but it's also an experience.
Well, it seems like every year you've added to the event, and from our earlier discussion, what you said about 2014 is just unbelievable. Flaming Lips are one of your headliners, Dashboard Confessional, Matt and Kim, and then so many others. And I understand you, Brandon, had a lot to do with the selection of the groups this year. Is that true about you?
Yes, guilty.
So how does one begin to do that, Brandon? How do you begin to narrow it down from all the possibilities? And how do you decide what's best for our Annapolis-area audience?
Little napkin, big budget.
You know, a dartboard with a bunch of, no. Honestly, it's a team effort, something that we meet about ad nauseam probably. And we, you know, you come up with your wish list, and you prepare to tear that completely apart, and then you come up with what's left of that and what you can support that with. And hopefully, you end up with a great lineup. It's something that constantly changes until you've got it nailed down. It never ends where it begins, and it's just a lot of hard work and persistence. And, you know, as far as nailing down musical taste, you know, you sort of have faith that, you know, you know that there's lots of great music fans in Annapolis and that they're very eclectic, and that you're hoping that you're putting together a great eclectic lineup that can appeal to anyone.
Well, I've mentioned a few of the groups that'll be performing, but the list is very long. Do you want to tell the audience a little bit more about some of the other groups that will be coming?
Sure. Well, I think, and also just to tap in to talk about that point as well as the teamwork, you know, the week that we were announcing the shows, we were working really late at night until the wee hours. And, you know, we confirmed bands like the night before or two nights before we were announcing. And Brandon and myself and our graphic designer Travis, we were all there until like 10 or 11 at night, got the confirmation that like Sleeper Agent had confirmed, which is a band that has like the number one track right now on Alt Nation. And so, you know, there's like high fives in the office at, you know, 11 or 12 at night. So that like team camaraderie is really important in kind of, you know, keeping us all going as we're, you know, having these late nights and eating pizza and trying to get this all going. So, segueing into your question, like Sleeper Agent is one of these bands that we're really excited about coming through, and that'll be the second time that we've had them. We've had them at Ramshead Live.
That's right. We've had, and maybe, we might have had them more than that, but I know recently we just hosted a Ramshead Live as part of like a radio series that we do that features up-and-coming bands. Like basically, it's like a tastemakers selection of like the bands that we think are going to be the next big thing that we work on with one of our radio partners. And so that was a band that we really like, and that it's, you know, they have a song called Waves that's really starting to make waves. But, you know, I think that, you know, they're a big part of a lot of other things that are going on. The Van's Warp Tour is a big tour that happens every year, and they're a part of that. So, it's nice to have, not only a band that you picked and that you like, and then after you pick that band and you decide that's a choice to add to your festival, they start to do things, and there's lots of buzz surrounding them. And so it's very helpful in promoting the festival and also that, you know, that we're picking a nice, relevant lineup for everyone, so.
So, it's an 11:00 AM till 11:00 PM event, so what's the best strategy for our audience to come at 11 and stay till 11?
Come early, stay late, the whole way through.
Eat lots of food, drink lots of beer.
No, you know, we'll get started at 11. We'll have yoga sessions early in the day, so, and we'll have food all day long. You know, we have great craft beers, obviously, from Fordham Brewing Company and Old Dominion. And we'll also have stuff from Bud Light, and, you know, we'll have great programming from, you know, other beverages throughout the day. Our VIP station is going to be well-decorated from Main Cottage, and they'll be taking care of the VIP area and making sure that everybody looks very chic while they're in the VIP.
Main Cottage can do that.
Yes, yeah.
They did it at the Peca Girlfriends Party, Flower Power Party, and it was so great. They had it down by the fish pond, all this wonderful furniture that everybody was just relaxing on and enjoying. So if they have their furniture at your event, it's going to look lovely.
Yeah, and so, you know, and the great thing is about starting early is that you get to see a lot of the local guys. So, School of Rock is going to get started very early, and they have a lot of the local, you know, younger, up-and-coming bands who are, you know, they've really got the passion started at a young age in high school. And that's a really fun and exciting time to see things. And then, you know, you get things going as the day goes on. You know, you've got Lita and Brothers Claire is another local band. They're from, they went to Broadneck High School. And then Sun Club, they went to Sorena Park High School. And so there's a lot of local flavor that is going to help to support as the day goes on. And I know I'm forgetting a couple, and I apologize, I don't have the list here, but...
I was going to say, of course you can't do it at Annapolis Music Festival without Jimmy's Chicken Shack.
There you go. And, you know, visually, you talked about the Main Cottage furniture, but visually, you have some pretty fancy things that are going to be taking place on your stage later as the day goes on.
Right.
Something that's never before really been quite seen here in Annapolis. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, to go back to what we were saying about why we do this, I mean, I think this links that very nicely. As we evolved as a company, you know, all the big concerts that we do are in Baltimore. You know, we do 4,000-people concerts, 14 or to 1,600-people concerts in Ramshead Live, and all these bands bring large production with them. And so we thought, you know, when, you know, why we do this, we wanted to bring one of those big-scale, big-deal, huge events to Annapolis. And so, our, all of our visions sort of align this year in that when we selected the Flaming Lips as our headliner, part of that selection process is that they are known for always having a very elaborate stage setup. Changes over the years, it's not always the same. And when we saw what they were bringing this year, we were like, oh my goodness, like this is going to be, it's going to, anyone who was there in 2012, this is going to feel like an entirely different level kind of event when they see the stage. Because it is, you know, there's just nothing but huge video walls and lights and things that I don't even know how to describe, to be honest with you.
I think I got a sampling of that, I got to see. It's wonderful.
I think you, Susan. I think it says something that when, you know, those of us, we book about 700 concerts a year in the state of Maryland through all of our properties. And when all of us saw the production and all of us were floored and have a hard time putting into words how excited we are for it, I think that says a lot about what is coming and what is going to be there August 16th, right here in Anorondale County. I mean, it's really, it's really exciting.
So I understand there's not just one stage, but three stages at the Silopana Music Festival. How are you going to fill them? Who's going to perform on the other stages?
Well, you know, it's, you have different levels of acts that you want to work with when you do something like this. And so, you, once you get your list, then you have to figure out where to put everyone. And I think a large part of that is working with people that, you know, we've had relationships with over the years as a company. One of those that's going to headline our second stage is Eric Hutchinson. He's actually a singer-songwriter from Tacoma Park, Maryland. And he's played all of our venues over the years. He's played at Ramshead On Stage, you know. Recently, we did an interview with him where he said, you know, he used to basically beg to play there, opening for different people, and then he went on to headline there, headline Ramshead Live in Baltimore, Pier 6 Pavilion in Baltimore, along with several other artists. And so we thought, you know, he has a new album out, you know, as we're booking these things, all different avails come our way, and he was on a list, and we thought, perfect. We need someone like that on our festival, we really want him there. And so he's going to headline our second stage.
So how do our viewers get to take advantage of this wonderful concert that's taking place on August 16?
Well, we have a website.
We do.
You can follow us on Twitter, silopanafest.com. You can follow us on Facebook, silopanafestival.com, or on Instagram, silopanafest. So we're kind of everywhere, and we'd love to have you be a part of our day or follow our journey on any of our social media. We wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be able to be able to even be trying to put on such a huge festival if it wasn't for the support over the last 25 years of the community and giving us this opportunity. It's a joy that we have every day to be able to bring great music into town and really share this experience with so many people in the area.
And so I would imagine the sooner people get their tickets, the better. Is it numbered seating or it's wherever they...
It's general admission except for VIP, so that's limited, and those ones are going fast, so those ones will, you know, run out. But yeah, general admission.
So, something to plan for in the month of August.
Yeah, thank you, Susan.
You know, as Erin mentioned, she's with the Ramshead Group, Brandon's with the Ramshead Group, and of course Ramshead Tavern is located right on West Street here in Annapolis, as I'm sure you all are aware of. And that's right on the edge of the Arts and Entertainment District in Annapolis. And among the things that will be happening in the month of August is the Annapolis Art Walk, and that will be including 20 galleries throughout Annapolis that people can check out on August 21. And then later in the month of August, on the 23rd, the Maryland Renaissance Festival kicks off. It's the second-largest one in the country, and it's going to be in Crownsville at Redwood Downs. And for people who've been there in the past...
Yes.
It's a great event, and it continues to be so, and promises to be wonderful once again this year. And that will run every weekend and Labor Day into October. So, I know the summer goes quickly, it's sort of, you think you'll get there, and then the season's over again. So, planning ahead is a really good idea. Well, I'm Susan Steckman with the Annapolis and Anorondale County Conference and Visitors Bureau, and I'm so happy to have had Erin McNaboe...
Thank you.
And Brandon Linton here from the Ramshead Group. And we'll see you next time on All Around Annapolis.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am Lily Openshaw, Project Manager for the New Water Treatment Plant Project and Master of Ceremonies this morning. Welcome to the long-awaited groundbreaking ceremony for the new Annapolis City Water Treatment Plant. Before I introduce our first guest speaker, I would like to recognize the many VIPs in the audience this morning, many of whom have been instrumental in getting this project to this point of construction. We have Mayor Michael Pantolides. Maryland State Senator John Astle. Maryland Department of Environment Secretary Robert M. Summers. Alder Persons, Ward 1, Joe Budge. Ward 3, Rhonda Pindell Charles. Ward 6, Kenneth Kirby. And City Department Heads, Department of Public Works, David Gerald. And Fire Chief David Stokes. I would now like to introduce the Mayor of Annapolis, the Honorable Michael Pantolides. Mayor Pantolides has been tremendously supportive of moving forward with this project, and it is fitting that this final phase of the project specifically programmed with future generations in mind will be overseen by a new administration that is led by a leader from the next generation. Please welcome Mayor Michael Pantolides.
Thank you, Lily, and welcome everyone on this special day. I want to start by saying thank you to two of our invited guests, former Mayor Ellen Moyer and Josh Cohen, for all of their hard work getting this started. Going back... Going back to 2009, a comprehensive facilities assessment indicated that the existing water treatment plant was at the end of its useful life. Based on a 50-year lifecycle and cost analysis, the city concluded that the most cost-effective way for a new plant was, rather than reconstruct the older one, was to build a new plant. This is an exciting day. It's going to be the largest public works project in the history of the city of Annapolis. We are going to replace the existing facility with a new state-of-the-art plant. It's going to improve reliability. It's going to allow for a part-time plant with automated controls that's going to save the city money. It's going to create an efficient way to refuse existing water tanks' wells piping, resulting in lower project costs. I'm very proud of our Department of Public Works, David Gerald, for the work they've done taking the project thus far. Whether producing and distributing high-quality water or completing and improving projects on our infrastructure, David's team, excuse me, is committed to excellence and strive to protect and enhance our community, and this is something impressive. For example, in 2013, there were approximately 600 water quality tests collected in the city system, and of the 3,000 tests that were performed, judging over 110 different various criteria, there were no water violations found. I think that deserves a round of applause. So it's without further introduction that I introduce our Public Works Director, David Gerald.
Thank you, and thanks for coming this morning. This is an important day for us, and we're excited to get started with the construction. By way of history, the existing plant that's in front of you, as the mayor mentioned, was built back in, or it was actually completed back in 1933. So just to give you a little bit of historical context for 1933, that was the year that the Golden Gate Bridge construction started in 1933. That was the year that Adolf Hitler came into power in Germany when he was appointed Chancellor, and that was the same year that Franklin Delano Roosevelt was, became president for his first term. And also, that was the year that Mount Rushmore was dedicated. So that was a few years ago. I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the project that we're almost all the way through. We've got the important part to go yet, but as the mayor mentioned, this has been a process since we started back in 2008. At that time, under Mayor Moyer's foresight and leadership, the city started, or commissioned a facility study to take a look at the old plant. The idea was going to be to do a comprehensive rehabilitation of the existing plant. So going into that study, that was the thought, is that we would keep the same plant and just rehabilitate it. As the study progressed, it became obvious that the two options, rehabilitation or replacement, had about the same cost, the same estimated cost, but there's a lot less risk in building a new plant as compared to rehabilitating a plant like this. So the decision was made in 2009 to build a new plant. In 2010, under Mayor Cohen's leadership and foresight, the city started a comprehensive rate study to take a look at what the revenue requirements would be, not only for this, for the new plant, but also for the system as a whole. So that, in 2011, that consultant reported out, and the city council and Mayor Cohen, under extreme political difficulties, passed a very comprehensive and very significant rate increase in order to fund this plant and fund the, provide the revenue that's required for the water and sewer systems. So that takes us up to 2011. 2012, we started the advertisement for a design-build contractor. We got a lot of interest. We had 13 respondents. Initially, all of them were strong. We thought it was going to be an easy process to weed out the weaker firms, and that didn't happen, so it was very competitive. We shortlisted to three firms, asked for technical and cost proposals from each of those three firms, and we selected CDM Smith Haskell, joint venture of two international and very well-regarded firms. So that was in, or August of 2012. 2013, we awarded the design-build contract and immediately started a pilot study of an innovative treatment technology called biological filtration. It offered a lot of things to the city, a cheaper lifecycle cost principally. So we spent the next several months looking at that. November of last year, we decided to go with conventional treatment. The biological filtration was actually going to be more expensive, so we opted for conventional treatment. And so our joint venture, CDM Smith Haskell, immediately started on the design of the So in 2014 this year, it's been an intensive year for wrapping up the design effort, getting bids for all the packages, and now we're ready to, now we're ready to get started with construction. So the rest of this year and all of next year is going to be an intensive time for the construction activities. And then in 2016, we expect to wrap up the construction, do the startup process, and have the plant turned over to the city. So starting back in 2008, we expect it's going to be an eight-year process to have a brand-new sparkling plant by 2016. So we look forward to having y'all back here again in about 20 months for that ceremony. We think it's going to be a fabulous plant. So at this time, I would just like to introduce Senator Astle and just say how much we appreciate the support that the state has given us through this whole project. Without their support, I'm not sure that we would have been able to move forward with this project. So they're providing funding support, they provide technical support, they just really adopted this project as their own Maryland Department of the Environment, and it's been this project as their own Maryland Department of the Environment, and it's been a terrific relationship that we form with them, and we're really appreciative of MDE and of the state for all the support. So Senator Astle.
Good morning, good morning. I'm pretty happy to be here. Groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, one of my specialties. But this one is particularly important for two reasons. First of all, I drink the water. And secondly, it illustrates the cooperation, the cooperative arrangements between the state of Maryland and the city of Annapolis. In getting ready for this, I learned a couple of things. First of all, we get our water here from eight wells, and these wells range in depth from 250 feet to 1,000 feet. And I have to believe the water from that 1,000-foot well probably is pretty old, you know, by the time it percolated down and got there, which means it's probably pretty clean. The water comes from three different aquifers, from the Magathie, from the Lower Patapsco, and the Upper Patapsco. And because the quality of the water that we pump up is pretty much the same, the water's all treated just the same. So that's the water. This got its start in 1863. There was a fire at the State House, and there was not sufficient water to really do the job that everybody thought needed to be done in dealing with the fire. And two years later, the Maryland General Assembly commissioned the Annapolis Water Company and charged them with providing pure and healthful water for all purposes. And I think the city water company has been doing that for a long, long time. So this is an important project. We're going to continue to do this, and those of us that live downtown will continue to drink that really good water. Thanks, David. And so now, the real actor in this was not just the General Assembly, but the Maryland Department of the Environment and all the things that they did to help move this project along. We have the Secretary, Secretary Robert Summers here today. He's dressed in his MDE outfit. This is his official uniform, including his hard hat, so he's here to tell us about his part. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for inviting me. Here's the famous hard hat. But we're really, really pleased to be able to be here to break ground on this project. Spent a long time in the development. Mayor Moyer, Mayor Cohen, Mayor Pantalides, thank you very much for your leadership in getting this done. It's a tremendous tribute to you all. Thank you, David, and the folks on the project staff. Tremendous work. It is very important, and I'm very pleased that Senator Astle looked into the water source side of this a little bit, because, I mean, here today, it's very easy to see infrastructure that we need to maintain. But keep in mind that the only reason we have a plant here is because we've got water, and we've got to maintain that essential natural infrastructure. And that's what the city of Annapolis has always been a leader in working with us to do things addressing stormwater and the other issues that we have to deal with in order to protect our water for future generations. So thank you again, and we look forward to being back in 20 months to cut the ribbon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Summers. Our next guest is Mr. Peter Kinsley, President of Haskell Construction's Government, Healthcare and Public Services Group, and Project Executive for the CDM Smith Haskell Joint Venture that was awarded this design-build-construction project. Mr. Kinsley has over 25 years of experience in water and wastewater infrastructure construction. He has an engineering degree from Vanderbilt University and is a licensed general contractor in several states. He has also taken a leading role in the design-build contracting arena, serving as President of the Design-Build Institute of America. As David said previously, we are very fortunate to be able to partner with Mr. Kinsley and his joint venture team for this project. Please welcome Mr. Peter Kinsley.
Thank you, Lilly. So Lilly asked me to keep my remarks brief, and because it's warm, I've cut my 30 minutes down to about 25, so if you guys are just kidding. So, so as Lilly stated, I'm Pete Kinsley. I serve as a project executive for the CDM Smith Haskell Joint Venture, and as I was preparing for the remarks, it really is an opportunity to reflect on past projects, right, past relationships, and it made me think about all the fine communities that I've served, all the challenging projects that I've done. And all of those projects, as you'd expect, were unique and had unique solutions, and the city of Annapolis is no different. This is a very unique project. I think David did a job describing the history of this facility, which is unique in itself. I'll reflect just briefly on a story at the, David walked through the progression of the procurement, and I remember at the pre-bid meeting, which was held in City Hall, and the mayor attended at the time, the previous mayor attended, and he made some opening remarks to talk about the importance of the project and inviting all the firms to compete for the work. Very appropriate. And then he went on to say that George Washington danced on these floors. And that's when I knew this was a unique community that was going to require unique solutions and was looking forward to competing for the work and hopefully being fortunate. I tell you, we've worked together as a team, and that's the beauty of design-build. We work collaboratively with the owner, the owner's staff, and our design-build team, and we've grown to understand how critically important the Annapolis Water Treatment Plant is, both for today and the future. And we understand that its mission is far greater than serving the 36,000 citizens of this community. It's serving the legislature, it's serving the governor, it's serving the Naval Academy, it's feeding a significant tourist industry that's alive and well. I was here last weekend, or last weekend, it's as busy as I've seen it, and so all that is good. We also understand the facility has to be delivered under budget. That's what we do for a living, is we deliver projects, and we also understand that the funding source requires LEED certification, and so we're going to leverage our experience with LEED certification. This is going to be a building and a facility built with sustainable principles and ultimately receive a LEED Silver Certification, which will be a fantastic accolade for this community. We also understand that the city's expectation is, is that we need an innovative solution that's going to provide long-term viability. I think that just goes under, with really no explanation considering the facility that we're standing in front. And we were fortunate enough to be selected because of the, because in part of the innovative design that we offered at the proposal time. I think we had a very sound design solution, all working on an active plant without disruption to any of your citizens or service, and I can assure you that Fitz wouldn't have it any other way. I'll wrap up with just a brief story. My mother is a nurse practitioner, specializes in cardiology and internal medicine, and growing up, there was a unspoken sense that she wanted me to be a doctor. That was a problem for me, because I struggle with even the smell of hospitals, and the idea of getting a shot makes me lightheaded, let alone giving one. So this was a significant problem. So, you know, go off to Vanderbilt, go off to Virginia Tech, get a bunch of civil engineering degrees, and now I get to design-build water wastewater plants for a living. And Mom and I were talking, and life has changed, two daughters going to college, and so we're talking kind of about life, and she must have had a sense that I thought she wanted me to be a doctor. And Mom made a comment that I should be very proud of what I do, because what I do makes people's lives better every day, and that it's a noble cause. And so as I look around this group of people that are advancing infrastructure for this community, building water and wastewater plants, and really building communities that our people live in, I think all of us should be very proud because of the fact that we make people's lives better every day, and I'm thankful to be able to do that. As David indicated, he gave me two extra months. I was going to say 18 months, so we now have 20 months. So you're always thankful to have time, but I'm absolutely confident this is going to be a beautiful facility, state-of-the-art technology, delivered on time and on budget, and so 18 or 20 months from now, we'll come together and we'll celebrate all that is, all that we've accomplished. Thank you.
Finally, I would like to introduce the core of the project team, Mr. James Fitzgerald and Ms. Tora Burkhart. Foresight and tenacity are the two words that best describe this team. Together, they have been the driving forces behind this project from its inception. First, please welcome Mr. James Fitzgerald, Superintendent of the Annapolis Water Treatment Plant. Mr. Fitzgerald has over 37 years of experience in the water treatment industry, serving as superintendent in Annapolis for the past eight. He has a science degree from Frostburg State University and has won numerous awards for the outstanding quality of his product, Annapolis City Water. Mr. James Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Lilly. There's going to be a tour of the facility when we're done. I think Senator Astle's actually giving the tour. It's been said a number of times that this project's the largest project that the city's ever done, and rightly so. I think that the facility that you see behind me, which was actually engineered in 1929 and completed in 1933, probably was the largest project at that time. And Mayor Pantalides alluded to the fact that last year, we did a significant number of tests and, on samples, and that there were no violations. This facility here actually has had no violations for over 35 years. I think the main reason for that is because of the many fine women and men, dedicated individuals that have operated, maintained, and managed this facility over that time. And they truly are dedicated, and I think it's been said also that we're excited to do this project. I'm not sure that anybody is more excited than I am. I've been, I kind of started this about seven years ago with Harry Sandroni, the chief engineer, and said, you know, Harry, this facility is not going to last forever. We need to take a look at what we need to do to have the citizens of the city of Annapolis continue to have enough clean water and sufficient quantity for domestic use and fire protection, and I think that's exactly what this facility is going to do.
Thanks, Fitz. And Fitz's great staff would not be doing what they're doing without Fitz. He's been amazing as a leader and also as part of our project team. You know, we engineers think of the project as a technical feat, but sometimes we forget what the operators need, and what Fitz has done is going to make it easier for the operators in the future, and eventually the superintendent, but we're not letting him out the door until this project is done. I also like to thank David Gerald. He's just played the perfect balance of knowing when to help us out and when to let us go. Lilly, I mean, we could not have done this project without Lilly. Many of you probably know Lilly from other work that she's done throughout the city, and we're so lucky to have her as our project manager. We have our owner's rep team who's been just fabulous. Brian Balatunis from HDR, the team is HDR and Atkins and Hery, and he's our project manager that's led us through the whole procurement and through the process to where it is today and will into the future. Also, Tom Gallagher, our design manager for the owner's rep and project engineer moving forward. The design-build team, as Lilly and others have mentioned, is just excellent, excellent design builder, and we're very lucky to have them. Pete, Tom McNulty, design manager, Al LeBlanc, and the construction manager, Pete, I mean, Paul Gilzendorf, moving us through the construction. County DPW, under the leadership of Chris Phipps, has been just a fabulous help, not only with coordinating with us to improve our emergency management procedures between the county and the city, so that if there are any types of failures, we'll be able to help each other out, but also helping us get used to the idea of a more automated plant, that the counties now have automated plants, and we're moving in that direction with this state-of-the-art facility. Others that have contributed and continue to contribute into this project and coordinate with us, Mike Woyton, our original project manager for the procurement and study phase. Hazen and Sawyer was the firm who did the initial study and led us in the direction of a new plant. MFSG, our rate study consultant, helped us with the revenue requirements, as David mentioned. MDE funding folks under Dr. Summers, Jag Koeman, Teresa Ernest, Debbie Fulmer, Rich Pensek, and many more, and also the early design project manager, Matthew Marshall, was a great help to us. There's several other agencies that we've been involved with, including State Highway, Maryland Historic Trust, and, you know, it's just been an incredibly cooperative environment to work in. I am extremely proud to be part of this team. I think some of you have probably seen in the news in the past couple of years, the horrible water main breaks in Baltimore and in DC, and we all know what can happen with those, including swallowing cars, and that just is a symbol of the state of our infrastructure, water infrastructure, and we need to address it. And I think the city is in the forefront of addressing those issues. So, thank you. Back to Lilly.
So Tora hopped up here and did not let me get a chance to introduce her, but I do want to mention how fortunate we are to have Tora Burkhart as our program manager. Her perseverance and dedication to this project are unsurpassed. She has been involved in all aspects of the project, from budget programming and hearings to contract development and negotiation, and most recently, design. Throughout these many years of project development, Ms. Burkhart has represented the city at numerous meetings and hearings at all levels of government, city, county, and state. Her professionalism and passion have won the respect of all who work with her. We are grateful for the hard work that she has done to make this project a reality. Thank you, Tora. That concludes our groundbreaking celebration. We'd like to invite you to tour the historic treatment building. Senator Astle, Mr. Fitzgerald, whoever wants to take the lead. I think the team would probably be kind of interesting. We would like to have all of today's speakers join us for a picture with hard hats and shovels to assist us with the official first dig over there, and we will see you back here in 2016 for the ribbon cutting.
And then we're all going, and I'm going to stay out of your way, but I do have to go under. All right? And we're going to do a little squinch, because we're all. Everybody looks so good. And we're going to say on three. One, we need you to physically be down there, because we're going to turn the dirt. It's official. And three, two, one.
Well, today is a very special day. It's one of the happiest days of my administration. We're doing the groundbreaking on the new water treatment plant. This is the most expensive and massive public works project in the history of the city of Annapolis. We've been fortunate over the last 30 years, we haven't had a single water violation within the city, and this new plant we're going to build is going to help us continue on that project. This was a great partnership we had with the state of Maryland. They were kind enough to give us some low-interest loans to build the plant, and the Maryland Department of the Environment has been great helping us with our water treatment plant. It's been a tremendous partnership. And I also want to thank the General Assembly for their work on this as well. It was honored that former mayor Josh Cohen and Ellen Moyer were here. They started this project, and my administration's taken the leadership role and seeing it through to completion. to completion.
Welcome to Annapolis Mosaics. Our program spotlights people in our community who are involved in activities designed to promote good human relations. I am Michael Keller, the Chair of the Annapolis Human Relations Commission, and your host. The commission is a city board that seeks to eliminate discrimination and promote equal opportunity. My guests today are Kathy Thorpe, who is the founder of Operation Welcome Home Maryland, and Larry Spivak, who is a team leader with that organization. Larry and Kathy, welcome to Annapolis Mosaics.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, could you begin by telling our viewers a little bit about the background of Operation Welcome Home? What do you do, and how long have you done it?
Well, thanks, Mike. Thanks for having us. We started this organization back March 2007, and we, since that time, have greeted over half a million service members through the gates of the international gates at Baltimore International Airport. And we are there in all hours, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, when we have our events, to greet our service members who come back from their deployments. Many of them are getting connecting flights and do not have family members to greet them. And what better way for us to show our support to these service members who give up so much and sacrifice so much, and all volunteer military organization service members, and there's a lot that we need to be grateful for.
What exactly do you do when the troops come through the terminal? What exactly goes on? Describe this, you know, describe exactly what it is when they come through those doors of the arrival terminal, and you're there. What does that you do?
We have, always have personnel right at the door that they come out to greet them so that they see that there's going to be somebody there right away. We decorate the area of the terminal with all sorts of welcome home signs. Depending on the amount of people who show up, you know, on their own that volunteer, we have a whole reception line, and we make goodie bags to give them all something to eat and drink as they come off. And we just try to make as much noise as we can to show them that they have the support of all of the people that are here and appreciate what they do.
Okay. About how many people, on average, take part in one of your welcome activities? And could you give us a sense of a profile of the kinds of people who actually take part, in terms of men and women, old or young? You know, just a general profile of what your membership, what your volunteer group is like? How many, and what are they like?
Well, depend on the time of the event. Sometimes, if it's on a Saturday, we'll have a nice crowd. If it's on a holiday, Christmas time, we seem to have quite a number of volunteers that come out. And if it's in the middle of the night, as Larry does a lot of those events, along with a couple other team leaders, our numbers are very small. That's certainly something for those night owls that are interested coming out. As far as the individuals that come out, we have the variety from young to the old, and Vietnam vets and World War II vets. We have church groups. We have community organizations. We've got businesses, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, college students, and children from grammar schools. Such the whole gamut of individuals come out and help us out for our events.
Okay. Do you have organizations or schools that participate as part of Operation Welcome Home?
Absolutely. We really enjoy a lot of the school participation. There's quite a number of schools even a distance away that help out by making handmade cards and sending them. Every snack bag has a handmade card. So, we get cards from all over. We go through about 8,000 handmade cards every month.
Wow.
So, we've got a lot of different schools that are all over the nation that send us cards. We have, for instance, St. Mary's here, who has been participating every year in a collection drive at Veterans Day, and they help us with their snack bags. So, we've got various other schools like that that do the same thing. They'll pick an occasion during the school year, and they do collection drives, and that's really, really helpful, because that helps us. 100% of all donations that we get go to the snack bags, and our service members really appreciate it. Sometimes they have long days of layovers when they're waiting for flights, and so that's a great little snack they have, and then the card of thanks, which I really appreciate.
We also have a lot of college students. The other night, we had the rugby team from Towson and a sorority from Towson there. So, that and Girl Scout troops and Brownie troops and all sorts of church groups.
Same with the Anarundel Community College. They also, along with a couple other colleges, will give college credit. So, we, they come and they volunteer so many hours, and that's a really great help, because we like to have the college students. We put them up front to help us with the service members and their luggage. So, there's a lot of great things that are going on in us helping out the community as a whole.
Well, there are a lot of troops that are coming back from overseas, and especially as the Afghan mission is being wound down, but also during the time of the Iraq War, when you had lots of troops being withdrawn. That's a lot of service people to cover. How often do you hold these events? How many of these events do you actually have?
Well, last year, we had over 320, and that's the most. Every progressive year, our numbers increase. We greeted 91,000 alone just last year. So, our event numbers, and with the additional support of having team leaders do the night events, it's been a great help. But certainly, the events are help throughout the day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays are the average days, and then there's other days that pop in there as well.
Well, you know, some of our viewers might be interested in learning how they can get in touch with you concerning your participation, concerning their participation in these events, and how they may get involved and how they may be able to help. How can they, can they reach you, Kathy or Larry?
A couple of ways. They can go on our website, which is OWHMD.org.
Okay. Could you repeat that?
And they will see all sorts of things. They can also look at the photos from events, and it will give them a schedule of upcoming events. We also have a hotline that they can call that's listed on the website, which we ask them to call before they leave for the airport, because we have no control over when these flights actually arrive, because it depends when they take off. So, sometimes the time arrivals change. So, we always encourage volunteers to stay, keep calling that hotline, and always call it before they leave for the airport.
We also have Facebook. We're up on Facebook, too, so that's a great way. A lot of our service members who have family from a distance away are always quite excited to send us notes of thanks and appreciation for greeting their loved ones, because they could not be there. So, it's an exciting, exciting way to stay in touch.
You may provide the participants in the Operation Welcome Home efforts with guidelines of what they're supposed to do. Are there things that you encourage participants to do, or things that you encourage participants to bring? Are there specific restrictions that you place on what they do or they bring? What kind of guidelines do you have for the participants? I mean, certainly, this isn't something that's a sort of, just show up and do it, and anything you want to. I'm sure this is, this is going to be, to some degree, it'll be spontaneous, but my guess is there is going to be, there has to be some orchestrated aspects to it. It has to be controlled and organized, especially since you're in an airport environment.
What we do is, when we find out that the plane has landed, we have like a brief little meeting of whoever has shown up as far as family members are concerned and volunteers. We divide up the tasks that need to be done, and then we go over with the, depending on where the plane's coming from and who we think are going to be on it. We just want the volunteers to greet the troops as loudly and as joyously as they can. We do put some guidelines as to where they can stand, because some of the troops are coming back with a lot of heavy luggage and all sorts of things that somebody could get hurt if it fell on them. So, we try to make sure that they don't go over a certain line and give the troops enough leeway to come out and move on through the airport.
And let me add to that, too. The donations that we receive all have to be sealed, so we can't have any organizations that want to bring any baked goods. And so, those are the snack items. People, when they come, they don't have to bring anything. We just need their bodies there, and our service members will remember that so, so much. But if they want to donate, certainly, they're welcome to bring a variety of different snack items for their snack bags.
It's amazing to see the service members. It has such an impact on them. Some of them actually, after they come through and they get their goodie bags, they'll stop and take photos of what's going on, and we've gotten emails from their relatives back home from wherever that may be, thanking us for being there, and it's pretty touching when you get those kind of things.
I'm sure that there are some volunteers that you have who either cannot get to the airport or have a difficult time getting to the airport. Are there ways in which individuals who can't physically be on the scene at the terminal, are there ways that they can participate as well? And if so, how, in what ways?
Yeah, and one of the great things, we have a variety of different retirement facilities that, as one of their activities, make handmade cards, and that's a great thing to do from a distance. There's some organizations also that might do a collection drive and, you know, donate a car to, like Sam's Club or BJ's that help us buy the snacks. And so, there's a lot of different ways, even though you can't physically be there to certainly help out.
I just have to add one thing. We have one volunteer. He is actually, he comes to a lot of late-night events. He is actually confined to a wheelchair. He hires college kids and pays them by the hour to bring them, and that's quite dedicated as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we're going to take a break right now, but when we return, I'll be talking with Kathy and with Larry about the reaction that the troops themselves have to Operation Welcome Home. I'm talking today with Kathy Thorpe, who is the founder of Operation Welcome Home Maryland, and with Larry Spivak, who is a team leader for that organization. Larry and Kathy have been talking about what they do when the troops come through that airport terminal and how the participants greet them. But what's really, I think, would be of interest to our viewers is how do the troops react? I mean, what have been the reaction of the troops? They come through that door, and they see you. What's their reaction?
It's like, wow. Especially, we have, all the time, they tell us, "I cannot believe, at 2:00 in the morning, you guys are here." We have some that have been deployed three or four times that remember us from when they came back. The reactions of the family members are obviously very touching. We've had proposals. So, it's, but to see their faces when they hear the noise, because they're coming through customs, and when they walk out and hear the noise and see all these people, they're just sometimes amazed, and it's quite heartwarming.
Response of the service members coming through is pretty astounding. A lot of them are so touched, we actually bring them to tears, and they are just so overwhelmed, and sometimes it's the first time they've seen their firstborn child. And those are such touching moments, and we all are surrounding them with, you know, lots of applause. It's really wonderful. We have a lot of, believe it or not, just recently, we met a Vietnam vet that came through, and one of my team leaders, we welcome everybody. And this just happened to be, he had kind of caught that flight coming in from Germany, and he said it was the very first time he'd ever been welcomed home. So, even in that generation of Vietnam vets, this means a great deal to them, because they had not gotten that welcome home. And they said, "We will be here, because we never got this welcome home," and they have such great passion to make sure our service members get this hero's welcome.
Well, could you share with our viewers one or more stories, memorable events that really touched you in terms of the reaction of the troops?
I just remember one time, it was real late at night, and it was a plane, it was all troops, and they must have been coming back from someplace pretty bad, and the kid just got off the plane and kissed the ground and said, "Thank God, I'm home in one piece." So, what can you say?
There's another service member who was injured, and from the impact of his injury, he was sent to Bethesda Naval, and had not told his unit that he was going to be there to greet his flight. So, he had arranged to get a pass from the hospital, and he came in his wheelchair and with all his appliances on his, you know, and injuries. And he was there to greet, we put him right up front as they come through the doors, and his whole unit was just so excited to see him. So, and that was a time during the holidays, and this huge Christmas tree fills up the whole area, and it was just, we were all just in tears, because it was such a wonderful event. So, it was certainly something very special.
And then one other one was, we had one event, it was also at night, where grandmother brought the son of her son, who had been killed in Afghanistan, to the plane, dressed in fatigues, and stood right at the front there. It was amazing that she was that strong to do that.
And we've had one of several young ladies now, they come, Miss Maryland Teen, and she stands right there at the door, and so, when you see the service members come through the door...
They like seeing her better than me.
So, it's been really great. A lot of involvement of the whole community, and I'm very, very appreciative to the whole community for coming out, giving their time, and to greet our troops, and our troops will never forget it.
Kathy and Larry, what got you involved in this particular program? There must be some, something that motivated you to do this, especially something, and as you're saying, you come out at all hours of the day and night to greet the returning troops. What got you involved in this?
Well, at the time I started this, I was on active duty, and I knew a lot of these service members. It was an office that we actually selected people, and I knew not everybody would be coming back, and it's always something that you know that this is a very serious thing that we are getting involved with. So, when I realized when the troops were coming back... So when I realized when the troops were coming back through Baltimore, and Baltimore receives the highest number of all the airports, I said, "Gee, we should be there to greet our troops." And that's how it got started. And also, I'm a mother of a daughter who's in the Army, a son that's in the Navy, and a husband also in the Navy, and a son in ROTC. So for me, I would, should want a parent to greet their loved one if I couldn't be there. And so I really, surely have a great passion for this.
And I got involved, my wife and I are involved with sponsoring kids at the Naval Academy. And through some of the people I met there, I found out about the organization, and I just started to go and volunteer. And I guess I started to show up enough that they then approached me to be a team leader, which I did. And, you know, I just chose, since I'm retired, to do the late night flights because that's where I'm more needed.
Well, you know, when I was looking at your website in preparing for our conversation today, I noticed one guestbook entry that read as follows, "Thank you for the wonderful Welcome Home at 2:00 a.m." And so I say, "Well, they must show up at all hours." And what I'm hearing is that you sort of spearhead or certainly actively involved in being there at very unusual hours.
Yeah.
What's that like?
Well, some, it's, we never know because there have been occasions where there's only been two of us, and we just have to wheel the goodie bags up to right at the front door. But we make sure that everybody gets a goodie bag and everybody gets a handshake, and you just do, you know, whatever you can. During holidays or when there's no school, believe it or not, sometimes we get people coming at 11:30, 12:00 at night. And there are people who come, there are people who work during the day that show up at 4:00 in the morning and then go to work that are volunteers. So we just never know at the night ones who we're going to get.
I want to acknowledge Larry as one of my team leaders. I have 24 team leaders, and the organization wouldn't be where it is today without these very dedicated team leaders that I have.
How many do you have?
24 total.
24.
Yeah. So there's usually two that lead an event. So it's great.
Most Americans, when polled today, say that the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan were mistakes, as was the Vietnam War. How does this figure?
I think overall, our service members, they volunteer to be in the military, and they follow whatever our president's orders are, and they'll go. They're very self-giving, and they go and they serve. And it's just an amazing, amazing generation that continue to serve even of the lessons of Vietnam. And they raise their hand and they said, you know, "Send me."
It doesn't really, even amongst the team leaders, there's people with all sorts of different thoughts on right or wrong, or what we should or shouldn't do. What we just try to do is have the attitude that it's just focus on the troops that are returning. Put everything else aside and just make sure that we do what we're there to do and do it right.
Yeah, you made reference earlier, Kathy, to the fact that we've got an all-volunteer military, and that certainly, the era of the citizen soldier ended with the elimination of the draft in the 1970s. And as a consequence, our wars are, have been fought since then, subsequent wars have been fought basically by a very tiny segment of society. Very few actively served. And there was a time when, you know, a fairly sizable percentage of members of Congress were veterans. Now it's just a very, very tiny proportion. And so how would you say that Operation Welcome Home helps to deal with this phenomenon where you've got such a small number who have had the experience as a citizen soldier? That that concept, which pretty much dominated the US scene, certainly in World War II, in Korea, and in Vietnam, where you did have citizen soldiers. Since then, it's been an all-volunteer army, all-volunteer military. You know, for the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, very, very, very few Americans took part. So how do you fit into that in dealing with that?
Well, unlike some of those other wars, for the most part, these are two wars since the all-volunteer army took effect, where we have people who have gone and come back six or seven times. That didn't happen. And that's what makes, I think, what we're doing a little more important because it's not like they just come home once. Sometimes they come home and they know that it's not going to be long before they're going back again. And when you meet the people who come up and shake your hand and tell you, "I've seen you five times," that makes you feel it is worthwhile, especially in light of what you just talked about, about an all-volunteer service.
And there's so many advances that are now being done in the medical arena that our service members are surviving at a phenomenal rate where before, in other words, we have not. So from the minute of impact until they get to Walter Reed, it's a period of five days, which is phenomenal. And that's all the services working together jointly on that whole medical evacuation process. And with that, I think Operation has helped a great deal because we are the first moment that they come back to a nation, and the nation's there to say, "Thank you." And I think also, it's been very helpful for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and young children that come out. This is certainly a patriotic lesson. We have quite a number of homeschoolers that come out, and this is a lesson part of their studies. And they all participate, and they can all see the service members and not just, "I'm writing a note and it's being sent somewhere." Now they can actually, there's actually, we've done some PENPAL. You know, there's been a couple groups that have done PENPALS, and now they can meet the PENPALS. So it really has, it brought in a lot of different avenues of the community as a whole being there to support our troops. But it's the very first moment of integration of what we do. Very important for a community so and the community that cares.
Thank you for viewing our program today, and please join us again on Annapolis Mosaics. If you would like to have more information about the Annapolis Human Relations Commission, jot down the information on your screen. You can reach us at 410-263-7998, by email at hrcommission@annapolis.gov, or you can check out our page at the City of Annapolis website. Go to www.annapolis.gov, click on the city government icon, then Boards and Commissions, and scroll down to the Human Relations Commission page. And always remember the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "We have flown the air like birds and swum the seas like fishes, but have yet to learn the simple act of walking to earth as brothers and sisters."